The City of Norco City Council Regular Meeting Agenda for May 16, 2018. Call to order at 6:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Council members Newton, Hannah, Bash, Mayor Pro Tem Grunmeyer, Mayor Hoffman.
Yes.
All present.
The Council, City Council recessed, a closed session to consider the following matters, and I believe City Manager Yevan.
Yes, we have an item to add, a potential litigation item to add to closed session.
All agree?
It's an item that just arrived.
Got a first and a second?
Council members Newton, Hannah, Bash, Mayor Pro Tem Grunmeyer, Mayor Hoffman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, recess, closed session. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Return back from closed session and reconvene to public session of the City of Norco City Council Regular Meeting and report any actions taken in closed session. City Attorney?
Yes, the City Council included, considered in closed session the items which are set forth on the agenda. In addition, there was the, an additional potential litigation matter which was added as an urgency item, and there are no reportable actions.
All right. Pledge of Legions. Please stand for Councilman Kevin Bash.
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and the true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remain standing for invocation by Pastor Rolando Rosales from the Beacon Hills Spanish Fellow Official. Good evening, Pastor.
Good evening. Please bow your heads as we go to Lord in prayer. Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening, Lord God, to thank you for your grace, your mercy, and your loving kindness. We thank you for this day and the opportunity we have, Lord, to gather. As we, Lord, gather with the council tonight, Lord God, we pray for your blessing upon the city of Norco. We pray specifically, Lord, for every council member and their families. We ask, Lord, that you would be with them as they meet to conduct city business and guide them, Holy Spirit, to, as they make every, any decisions tonight. Lord, we also pray for our city, service members, police department, Lord God, firefighters, medical respondents, Lord Jesus, our schools, teachers, students, and children, specifically, Lord God, the citizens of Norco. We pray not only for your protection, but also for your guidance and direction for all city officials whom you have placed in positions of responsibility and leadership within the city of Norco. Lord, may we honor you with your, with integrity and truth. We ask and pray all these things in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. All right. This time of our meeting, we like to appreciate some of our local businesses along with some of the, of our citizens, so I'm going to turn this over to Brad Runfree from the Economic Development Committee.
Thank you. Can I have Representatives from AFS up, please? AFS Printing, is there anyone here? Great. Come on up. So, one of the things that the Economic Development Council likes to, or does on a monthly basis is recognize establishments in the city of Norco who have contributed to the welfare of the city, to the culture of the city, obviously to the economics of the city, because that's what we care about in the Economic Development Committee. But, on a personal note, I've been a resident here for about 21 years, I think, and AFS has always been one of the stalwart businesses in the community. They have supportive community events, they go far out of their way to assist in all areas of the, of the community, they, their employees volunteer their time, they volunteer their work, not to mention the fact that over 25 years, their business has changed so much, and they've still been able to stay at the top of the pinnacle of it. So, for that, we'd like to give them a Business Recognition Award this evening, and very simply it states, "The city of Norco hereby recognizes AFS Printing for outstanding service in a rapidly changing industry for more than 25 years and generously supporting community events in Horshtown, USA." Thank you very much.
First of all, thanks, it's a great honor. Hundred percent credit goes to my team, and this honor also gives me a big responsibility as well to preserve the trust and the faith that everybody has on AFS, and I will make sure, I will try my level best on behalf of my team. We will never let you down. Thank you again, it's a great honor.
I have, I have to admit, the, it's, no matter where you, yeah, you've got to get your picture. You can't run away here. Come on, you've got to get your picture. The staff has always been great to work with, all these years, and I, it's a pleasure to work, come on over there. Come on, you don't have to. All right. And you know what's fun with these guys, these graphic guys? You bring in some stuff that they go, "What is that?", and they'll fix it up and make it all kinds of pretty. I get to recognize a bunch of gals that, for over 50 years, actually it's longer than that, have been playing the great American sport, for the softball. So, I know that there's a bunch here to accept a certificate, and I've got the lift. So, if you're here, come on up here. Dave, Ms. Krisky? He's a, well, I'm sorry, did I butcher that? All right. Sorry about that. Teresa Garcia, Jeremy Scholes, Yoli Bravo, Wendy Osborne, Orion O'Keefe, Lilia Robertson, Mike Cook, Robert Robertson, come on back here, they'll hide the picture. Mary Bell Orozco, Yoli, oh, it's twice. Frankie Schbartsch, you do a lot, golly! So, if I say this right. Dustin Shope, Stephanie Butler, Kristian Sinus, Ann Brown, Jeremy Russell, Tommy Sinus, Sean Casper, David Kudra, Adam Maloyan, Vince Montorosa, Tony Ranquillo, Aldolfo, Al, um, Alcrone?
Alcrone.
Alcrone, and Manny Herrera III. Having, having coached girls softball, having a daughter to play for, from like six years old to 18, and still played after that, it's a special thing to see you guys up here and what you do, because for 50 years, and for some of you, and Kevin's going to remind me of it, girl softball has been beyond that in Norco. And I recall graduating from Norco High School just as we got out, and one of my friends said, "Hey, what do you want to do?", and I go, "Well, I'm not doing anything." He goes, "Hey, let's go coach these girls softball teams." I go, "What?". He goes, "Yeah, you play baseball, you know it this time." It was an experience, enjoyable experience, so we appreciate it, and Cheryl, we have some gift certificates or certificates for them? Want to accept this on that? I'm the big guy? All right. You have anything to say?
I do. First of all, thank you so much. You know, what's special about Norco Girl Softball is, we had our 50th anniversary this year, and we invited everybody that participated and played in the league over the last 50 years, and it was so awesome to see, you know, moms, grandmas, aunts, sisters. It's one of those leagues, we're nestled between three large leagues around us, Corona, Riverside, and Eastvale, which triple our size. But what's cool about Norco is, these people don't leave to go to other leagues, they stay in Norco. So, to see that, that seniority of people coming back, and we have now coaches on the board that don't even have daughters in the league, that come back and have the pride to help coach our girls of Norco. So, I think it's special, I'm so proud to be part of this organization, and I'm like you, I thought I'd never be doing softball, but to coach girls in softball, it's just a truly rewarding thing. So, I want to bring up our girls, though, because they came out, so if you guys can come up here too, please. These are our All-Star Girls, so they've played softball. This is our 10-U Division, they've played softball since September, they've had a couple of breaks in Christmas, but now they're about to embark for the next six weeks, competing against other cities and districts from Santa Barbara all the way down to San Diego, and hopefully to make their city proud, and it'll be a very exciting time for them. So, this is our 10-U and some 8-U players here from Norco Softball, so we're proud of these girls, but thank you for everything.
We'll get everybody in front of the podium, and that way the picture, so Matt has a good picture. Come on, get, all right, coaches, managers, get up there. Come on, you guys get up there. You know, this is history. If you think about Norco High softball and all the girls that have gone on to college and the four-year universities, this is where they started, playing here in the city leagues, going to travel ball, everywhere else, so it's exciting times, and coaches, thank you very much, girls, thank you very much, and one good thing is, it's fun. It's a lot of fun. All right, most days. Come on, guys, come on. Thank you, guys, appreciate it. Ms. Overstreet. This breaks up from the Norco Regional Conservancy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council and staff. We have a letter before you, we want you to please accept as a matter of courtesy to advise you that the above-subject matter in regards to the dissolution of the Board of Resign, uh, and Board resignation of the Norco Regional Conservancy. This decision was made in unison by all Board members. We are currently in the process of finalizing the dissolution with the State Attorney General, General's Office, and the Secretary of State. The annual ranch tour, which has been presented by the Norco Regional Conservancy in the past, is now going to be presented by Rural. It's coming up May 19th. The Board members came in unison and agreed that the annual ranch tour is so important and is part of sharing the Norco lifestyle. The balance of the Norco Regional Conservancy funds will be donated to the Norco Future Farmers of America Alumni Association, a nonprofit organization. This donation will be approximately $2,272, $275, thank you. The actual donation will be made upon approval of the NRC dissolution by the State Attorney General's Office. At this time, we are presenting a donation as an IOU to our Mayor Pro Tem, and we'll be giving you the actual funds as soon as it's cleared by the Attorney General. We want to thank you for your support over the years of the Conservancy, and Robin, I don't think you can read my T-shirt, which I buy all my fine wear from the Norco, the Tractor Supply, but it says, "Support Farmers of America", and so we're trying to do that. So, want to thank you, and the money's forthcoming, you know we're good for it. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll call them up. Oh, they're coming up. Okay, all right. I'm getting directions for the city clerk, so. This is the Norco Youth Advisory Council Program, and their year-end report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council Members. My name is Michael Young. This is my second year serving Norco Youth Advisory Council, and I was honored to serve as its Chair. We are here tonight to present a year-end report for the 2017-2018 term year. We began our year with a tour of city parks and facilities provided by Mr. Petrie. Deputy City Manager and Director of Park Recreation, Mr. Petrie shares with us some history and locations visited, which included George Ingalls Equestrian Event Center, Neil Snipes Park, and then Community Center and Park. This tour provided an extensive overview of what the city has to offer for use by its citizens, including locations sold events for the youth of Norco.
Hello, good evening. My name is Jessica Campo, Vice Chair for the Norco Youth Advisory Council. This was also my second year as a member of NIAC. As such, I was able to provide some background on the discussion items that began last year for programs like Volunteer to Win, Youth in Government Day, the Potential Escape Arc and/or the Youth Center. This year, our primary concentration was on the volunteer program and on Youth in Government Day. These were not implemented last year due to lack of time in the term year, but we were successful in finalizing details this year in order to hold a Youth in Government Day, which Secretary Clint Nichol will share with you.
Good evening. My name is Clint Nichol, and I served as Secretary for this term year. As Vice Chair Campo mentioned, we were able to finalize details and after almost two decades hold a Youth in Government Day. This program provided an opportunity for students to experience a day in local government. The event was held on May 10th and was attended by 14 students from Norco High School, High School, and JFK Middle College High School. The Norco Youth Advisory Council would like to thank the administration staff for their assistance in the preparations which helped make this event successful. Thank you to the executive staff for sharing their knowledge and time with their appointed student counterpart. We would also like to thank Mayor Ted Hoffman and Council Members Bash and Newton for spending the day with the appointed student council members, and appreciate the support received from Mayor Pro Tem Grunmeyer and Council Member Hannah.
Good evening. My name is Izzy Henrickson. I am pleased to share that a new program was developed this year called, excuse me, called Emergency Prepartness Training, a training that is geared to the youth of Norco. In October, I approached my co-members with the suggestion of developing an emergency type of training for teens because of all the bad things happening around us and throughout the nation. A subcommittee was created to do research. We reached out to the Cal Fire Riverside County Norco Station 57 for guidance. Captain Don Camp gave the Advisory Council an overview of a program available for such training. The inaugural event occurred on Saturday, May 5th, with overwhelming results. Captain Camp has offered to further develop the program based on reviews from attendees on that Saturday. We extend our app, appreciation to Captain Camp and his crew for assisting in making this program a reality. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Logan, and on behalf of Chair Young and all members of the Norco Youth Advisory Council, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to serve on this year's Advisory Council. It has been an honor and a learning experience for all of us. I'm happy to share that four of our current members will be reapplying for consideration to serve for another term next school year, including myself. Thank you.
That's it? Can I have my fellow council people? Come on up here. For, for those who don't know, Diane Germain is probably one of the instrumental persons in keeping these kids and organizing for their meetings and everything, so for us, from staff, from the council, thank you, appreciate it, okay? This is your second council, so you're looking forward. You got recruited some of these kids for next year, right?
Yeah.
All right, see how you do it. This is the brainchild of Robin Grunmeyer. When she came on council and before that, her goal was to make sure we get youth involved in government, and Robin, I think you've accomplished that, so thank you for that. See, my two counterparts over here that were with me on May 10th on Government Day, did we have fun?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we did.
Fun than you had.
Yeah, I know. It was, it was, it was exciting to see these kids go through a council session as Government Day. I know each one of the staff had fun, I think, a little tired, yeah, it was a little exciting and just a little challenging, I would imagine, to having the kids up there, but I think, I think they learned, and I hope they did, you got feedback for them, and so we appreciate because they all took part in it. So, what we'd like to do is appreciate them through, so come on up here, Diane, help me with the names, because I'm going to butcher it up.
Karen's not here today.
All right, well, we're going to say, Karen Castanada, she's not here right tonight.
Neither is she.
Aleja Rosa.
She's not here either, nor.
Nora Nindra.
Nicole's here.
Nicole Logan, you're here. All right, Nicole, thank you. Good job. Come on. Come on back here. Alexis Larue. Good job. These are certificates of recognition and appreciation. Isabel Hedrickson.
Or Izzy.
Izzy. And Izzy not only is here, she's also FFA, and a whole lot of things at school, so.
Anthony couldn't make it tonight.
Anthony Garcia is not here.
Clint.
Clint Nichol.
Nichol or Nichol?
Nichol, all right.
Vice Chair.
Jessica Ocampo, our Vice Chair. Good girl, all right, thank you.
Graduating this year.
You're graduating, so we want to see, good luck.
Michael Young.
And Michael Young, and he's a tough gallery guy. He came in there, he challenged his council. Thank you, Mike, appreciate all you did. All right. So, Diane, we going to take picture a little more?
Thank you, Mike. Done it? Okay.
All right, we got to stand in front of the podium, because they don't.
All right, thank you.
Told you, you take charge of them. Okay, when you guys turn 18, remember you got to vote, it's on registered vote.
I'll take her next year, by the way.
All right, that's, oh, good. You hear that? She's going to register you kids next year, aren't you surprised? All right. Now I'm pleased to announce Dr. Brian Reese, President of the Norco College, who's going to say a few words. Good evening, Dr. Reese.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You know, I, let's see, can we go to the first slide? Oh, I have a, I have a slide thing here, let's see. Which one? Oh, got to use the right remote, okay. We're working, there we go, good. Well, thank you, thank you for having me here this evening, and like a couple of other of the groups tonight, I'd like to give you a year-end report on Norco College and the work that we've been doing, specifically in the city of Norco. You know, the idea of Norco College really started about 40 years ago. The college isn't that old, but certainly the idea is, we started offering courses throughout the region in the, in the 70s. In the mid 80s, 1985, we purchased all the land that the college is currently on, 141 acres for $1, from the, the federal government. And in 1991, we started groundbreaking on the college. In 2010, Norco College became the 112th community college in the state of California, and now 2018, we serve over 13,000 students with about 300 employees, or a little over 300 employees at the college. As I mentioned tonight, what I'm, would like to do is really highlight some of the work that we've been doing in partnership with the city, and some of the work that we've been doing in partnership with organizations throughout the city. Our students at Norco College come with really three goals in mind. One is to get a certificate and move into the workforce, so we have a number of degrees that move you through programs like manufacturing, and logistics, and electronics, and things like that. They're designed to move you right into the workforce. We also have a number of students that come to us for AA degrees or AS degrees, and most of our students are coming with the intention of moving on to transfer to Cal States and to UCs and private universities. About 6% of those students come from the city of Norco, so it's a smaller population compared to the, some of the other cities. But I always remind people, and it's, it's obvious in our name, Norco College is named after the city of Norco. It's not named after the city of Corona, it's not Eastvale Corona Norco College, it's not Harupa Valley Eastvale Norco, it's Norco College, and I really do feel like we have a special and unique relationship with the city. I'd like to point a few of those things out for you tonight. There are three very unique partnerships that we have going on, one's pretty stable now, and two are emerging. The first one is our partnership with JFK Middle College High School. This is actually a high school that is part of the Corona Norco Unified School District. It's located on the college property. It's a small high school, has about 500 students roughly. It's, for a long time, it's been a 10th, 11th, and 12th grade high school, and starting next year, it's going to be a 9th grade through 12th grade high school. And one of the unique things, maybe the unique, unique thing about this program, is when you're enrolled at JFK High School, you can take college courses for free. You can walk right across the parking lot and take any college course that, that you would like to, and this program has really become very, very successful. It used to be the largest middle college in the entire country, now it's one of the top five. There's been a couple of those that were built that are, that are larger, larger in the last few years, but it's one of the most successful programs in the entire country. In fact, last year, when I was going, you know, the head graduation that's coming up again in a couple of weeks, last year I was at the graduation, and about 175 students walked across the stage to get their diploma, and of the 175 students, almost all of them, almost every single one of them had completed some college courses while they walked across the stage. About 40 of them, little over 40, had finished their entire freshman year of college while they were in high school, and over 20 of them had finished their freshman and their sophomore year while they were in high school, which, I mean, there were students walking across the stage that got their high school diploma, and they're going off to UCLA, or they're going off to Cal State San Bernardino as juniors, starting as juniors. It was unbelievable to me, especially when I think about my own high school experience, I could have, could have never done anything like that. So, what I really, really like about this is it is a great way to creatively combine resources, public taxpayer resources, to help families save money. When, you know, when you, when you think about the, the kid that finished their freshman and sophomore year, and now they're going off to UCLA as a junior, what that means is they did two years of college, they would have had to do those two years at UCLA, they did two years of college for free because of this partnership. If they had gone to UCLA, they would have had to pay $35,000 per year, it saved, it saved families about $75,000, that one family, and this kind of savings is going on at JFK. We're taking that idea and we're extending it over to Norco High School through something called a CCAP partnership, which is, the main idea is we've approved a partnership, their Board and our Board approved it last month, and this partnership will establish the same kind of relationship where we offer college courses on the high school campus, students can take the college courses and get their books for free through this program. Students can take the college courses and get their books for free through this program. And so, we're starting this in the fall semester and the track that we're starting on is an engineering track. So, the students that are going to be going through this are on some kind, these are young students, so they don't know for sure what they want to do, but they know it's some kind of engineering pathway that they want to be on. They might want to pursue something like manufacturing, or they might want to pursue something like be electrician, or they might want to push all the way through that pathway and become a civil engineer or something along those lines. But that's the pathway. As of last week, we have, let me see the number here, we have 337 students at the high school that have signed up for the program. Our goal, my hope was to, over a couple of years, get to 500. We're at 337 and the program hasn't even started. So, I think this is going to be a very successful program for the city of Norco. Finally, the third relationship that I'm very excited about is Silver Lakes. We have started a conversation. Councilman Bash has been very helpful in helping establish that relationship. I've been meeting with RJ to talk about a couple of interesting projects. First of all, you all know they're an arsenal club and they've got this feeder pipeline. We would like that to partly feed into the Norco College soccer program. We're talking to them about possibly using the stadium that they're building as the home field for Norco College, which I think would be a great partnership. And we're talking a lot about collaborating on a community college tournament, national tournament where we co-sponsor that. We're talking about collaborating on a high school, national high school tournament and an international club tournament, all with the idea of bringing players to the region and then recruiting them to the Norco College soccer team. So, I'm really looking forward, you know what I'm looking forward to, is transitioning our not-so-successful soccer team into a championship, to be frank with you, a championship-level soccer team. I feel like we have a really good and solid and growing integration between the college and the city. We recently hosted the President's Dinner at Silver Lakes and the council was very generous in helping set that up and participating in the event. We continue to sponsor the Norco Fair and the Norco Area Chamber of, Norco Area Chamber Installation Awards and Dinner. We have a number of college employees that are proudly serving on city committees and organizations in the city, like the Chamber and Rotary. We have a number of employees working with you on the Veterans Organization and things like that. And we have city folks working on college efforts, working on hiring committees and the President's Advisory Board and the Road Advisory Board and things like that. Speaking of the road, when I got to Norco College, I kind of inherited a mess with regard to traffic. Traffic was piling up, especially at the top of the semester when it was busiest. It was backing up onto Hamner. It was frustrating everybody, and I do mean everybody, not just the employees at the college and the students and employees. It's frustrating residents, it's frustrating the business owners along Hamner. It was a big frustration. So, I spent a lot of time speaking to Andy and council persons and the engineering staff here. We eventually pulled together a traffic advisory board. And Robin Gurney and Mayor Hoffman are both, were both part of that effort and met with a lot of residents about possible solutions. What I remember, and I remember specifically Mayor Hoffman pulling me aside after that advisory board, and what he said to me and other advisory board members said was, "Look, and we all agree on this, we can't build a solution that goes through the neighborhoods. Impossible. If I had a road trying to go in front of my house, I would be up here every single council meeting complaining about that. Nobody wants that. So, there's not going to be a solution that goes through the neighborhoods. What we need to find is solutions that don't go through the neighborhoods, but what was strongly emphasized to me is first, do something about Third Street. Try to do whatever you can to improve Third Street." So, we spent the last year really taking a close look at that, hired a traffic engineer and consultant to come in. It used to be two lanes going in and two lanes going out. We were able to convert that into three lanes going in and three lanes coming out. We were able to take out a series of stop signs and establish a signal system called the HAWK system. And now, I don't know if you've noticed, but traffic is not backing up at that intersection of Hamner and Third now. And it took everybody that is going to the college and going to JFK about a month to figure out how everything works, but traffic seems to be moving much smoother along that About a month ago, or about two months ago, the Norco Police Department and the Riverside County Sheriff's Department were alerted to a possible active shooter threat at Norco College. And I'm convinced that the Norco Police Department literally saved lives at Norco College. This was an unbelievable effort put on by the police department here. There was an active shooter threat, you're all familiar with this story, that was, we kind of found out about it over Facebook. When I say "we" found out about it, I found out about it because of the police department. Yeah, that's right. Yeah. And after further, I mean, they got the guy with loaded weapons and, you know, AKs and all kinds of stuff at his home. They did a further investigation, found that he had a partner in Oregon. And there was a specific plan to do some real damage, life-threatening damage at Norco College. And this partnership between the local police department, the college police department, Riverside County Sheriff's Department, even the FBI were brought in, I think, is remarkable. And I just wanted, we recognized them last night at the Riverside Community College District Board of Trustees Meeting, and I want to say publicly how grateful I am to the Norco Police Department. If anybody associated with the Norco Police Department ever needs anything at Norco College, you call me directly and we will move mountains for you because of the work that you've done for us. I really appreciate that. We're going to be soon, soon to be offering community education in the area. And what I like about community education is it, these aren't courses that lead to degrees or anything, these are courses that are fun, that people might like to take. And we have a whole range of possibilities that we're talking about, from equine care to watercolor painting, to visiting, you know, wineries, all kinds of stuff that might be interesting here. So, if you're interested in expanding and partnering with us on community education, I would love to chat with you about that. I want to end very quickly by talking about one strategic initiative that we're working on. There are five big initiatives we're working on. I don't have time to go into all five of these, I just want to mention one. And that has to do with veterans' education. One of the things that I really appreciate about the city of Norco is the partnership that we've developed on working with veterans and we share a very serious commitment to helping veterans. A lot of veterans struggle moving from a military life into a civilian life. And this includes veterans that are moving from a military life into college. In fact, veterans go to college at a lower rate right now than non-veterans. And we really need to do something about that. We've got to figure out ways to get them, because once they get to college, they tend to do better than the non-veterans. So, I mean, they have the discipline, they have the commitment, they have the work ethic, they have all those things you need to be a successful student, but somehow they're being frustrated about going to college. So, I really want to build Norco College into something that is great, great at recruiting veterans. We're already very good. We've been recognized three times out of the last four years as one of the best colleges in the country at building a space for veterans. We were ranked number two in the state of California, number two, and we're going to number one. That's a place where I want to make sure, and I want to increase the number of veterans that are coming to the college and increase the quality of services that we offer veterans. And to do that, we're working on four projects. One is a Veterans Resource Center. It's important when veterans come to a new setting, come to college, that they're able to find a place where they can get all the services in one area, get their GI benefit for college, get the housing support for college, get all the things that they need, counseling and ed plan. But they also need a place where they can find other veterans. It's important that they build fellowship with other veterans because they've been through similar experiences. So, we are already started on Phase 1 of the Veterans Resource Center. It looks something like this. If you've been down Third Street and you've seen the flags, you've seen the flag poles there, it's going to be, it's going to be right behind the flag poles there. We are working on building Phase 2. Phase 2 will be a much larger structure than this, and our goal for Phase 2 is to build a regional Veterans Resource Center where veterans in the entire region can come, not just students, veterans from any part of the region can come to get medical care, can get help with processing any of the medical benefits or any of the veterans' benefits and help with mental health issues and a whole range of issues. The idea is to take the VA clinic in Corona, move it into the Phase 2 building here and the Veterans Clinic in Corona. There's only three veterans' centers in the Inland Empire, one in Temecula, one in Corona, and one in Colton. We want to take the one in Corona and move it into this brand-new space, Phase 2, and have a regional center. My dream is to have old-school veterans meeting with new veterans in college, building a relationship like that, showing them pathways to success and building something really special in the region. Another effort we're working on is housing. A big problem for veterans going to college is finding housing and finding affordable housing. You know, when veterans go to college, they get a certain benefit based on their zip code. And we've got to figure out an elegant and affordable housing solution for veterans that's around $800 a month. It's got to be low, but it can't be poor quality. I want it to be high-quality and affordable for veterans. Otherwise, they're spending too much money on rent, then they have to get a job so they can pay for food and books, then they can't take enough courses to finish in the allotted amount of time that they have for their GI bill. So, we've got to figure out a way to get them affordable housing, either on campus or adjacent to campus. We've been working very seriously on this. Another issue we need to deal with is women in the veterans. About 14% or 15%, around that range of active-duty personnel today are women. And few of them are going to college, fewer of them, we don't have 14% of them in college. And a lot of that is because of this issue here. They've got kids, they've got spouses, and they can't find good childcare and they can't find good housing in a college setting where they can go. So, we're partnering with Riverside County Office of Ed to build a childcare facility. And I'm really looking forward to this and how it's going to impact veteran families. The last thing I'll mention on the veterans' initiative, I'm not going to go into the details on this, but I will say, every veteran or every active-duty member wearing the uniform does training in the military. And they often do some kind of training in public safety or healthcare or electronics or something related to engineering. They do all kinds of technical training in the military. And then, when they get out of the military and they come back to college, we make them do that training all over again, which is ridiculous. I remember running across this when I was a vice president at Crafton Hills College. We had a fire academy. And so, people would come in, they want to be firefighters, go through the academy, and we'd often have firefighters from Camp Pendleton in San Diego, they were firefighters in the Marines, they'd been firefighters for years in the Marines, real firefighters. And they wanted to become civilian firefighters. We would make them go through the entire fire academy. We would teach them how to raise a ladder, teach them how to hook a hose up to a fire. This doesn't make any sense. These guys are real, they probably knew 80% of the curriculum already. All we needed to do was figure out how to give them credit for that 80% and have them do the other 20% so they'd become a municipal firefighter or a county firefighter, a state firefighter. This goes on year after year after year. We don't recognize the training that individuals receive while they're in the military. We need to figure out a way to give them the credit they deserve. They've done the training in so many of these technical areas and colleges and universities are not recognizing this. Norco College is already establishing a program that will help maximize the amount of credit veterans receive for the training that they've already done in the military. The last thing I'll mention, and then I'll end it with this slide here, is if you're thinking about going to college, if you're a young person, maybe in the audience, thinking about going to college, if you're a parent thinking about sending kids to college, if you're a grandparent thinking about helping kids go to college, if you're thinking about returning to college, you're thinking about money. It is expensive to go to college. And I'd like you to think about, if you're stressed out about this, think about Norco College as a solution. If you can see on this chart up here, Cal State costs $239 per unit. Norco College, instead, if you took classes there, costs you $46 per unit. If you decided to start out at UCLA or UC San Diego or UC Berkeley or something like that, you're going to pay $479 per unit. If you did the same exact courses at Norco College, it costs you $46 per unit. And if you went to a private school like Pepperdine or University of Redlands or USC, you're going to pay about $4,000 per unit instead of $46 per unit. Norco College has transfer relationships with every single Cal State, every single UC. Our courses transfer to Harvard and Yale and USC and Pepperdine, all these institutions. So, if you're worried about the cost of education, and I think everybody is, unless you're wealthy, everybody's worried about the cost of education, you need to consider coming to Norco College. If you took 18 units at Norco College, instead of Cal State, you would save $3,000 in one semester, just on tuition. If you took 18 units at Norco College, instead of taking at UCLA, you'd save $7,000 in one semester. And if you took 18 units of coursework at Norco College, instead of at Pepperdine, you'd save $76,000 in tuition. All of these units that you take at Norco College transfer to all these universities. That's what I did. I transferred. I got a bachelor's degree from USC, that's what my diploma says, but I didn't do all four years there. I did the last two years there. This is a really good solution. It helps middle-income families, and this is one of the things that I'm most proud of about Norco College. So, thank you very much. I look forward to continuing to build a relationship with the city of Norco.
Thank you, Dr. Reese. I just shared with the city manager, when I went to college many, many years ago, it was $33 a unit at a Cal Poly at that time, so, yeah, and $9 for the JC, I recall that. I know. Well, we're still, we're using horse and buggy. All right. Moving right along, city council business item. Yeah, we had actually, we had round wheels. Yeah, we didn't have square wheels. City Council Communication Reports on Regional Boards and Commissions. I'm going to ask you guys to make a brief because we've got a lot of agenda to go through. Start over there, Greg.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Last, May 3rd, Thursday, we had the special board meeting of the Chino Basin Desalter Authority. Not too much to report, just basic authorizations of some purchase orders and about three or four closed-session items. Thank you, Mayor.
Kevin?
I had a lot of meetings. I'll go fast. We finalized this year's budget for the RCA, $34,599.914, something like that. Anyway, 35 million. WRCOG, they talked a lot about the bills that are coming down from Sacramento. I'm not going to get into all of them now, but at some point, I'll sit down and talk with Andy. There's a lot of bills that are going to really impact Norco. Candidly, it's like they don't have any common sense at all. So, there's things that we're going to have to really, really plan for. Went to the SCAG, and the thing I took away from SCAG was that cities are now being, it's suggested that they create destination points. They create, one of the things they talked about is in down times, people may not buy the new car, they may not get the new house, they may not buy the new coat, but they'll make sure their kids are on a horse, playing soccer, doing something like that. They're very good hedges against downturns in the economy. They said the day of the big box is done, at least for the foreseeable future. And I know I've been done with just so many meetings, but that's about it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Bruin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I'll start off with RTA and all... First off, I'll start off with RTA, and I'll tell, remind Dr. Reese of this, that the students, I know you know this, but the students over at the college can buy a pass, a bus pass, for $6 a semester that allows them to ride the bus 24 hours, seven days a week. They can ride to and from the college, they can go anywhere they want to, and pretty soon, they'll be starting up a bus route on River Road that'll go from Corona. The Corona bus will come up here and it'll change over to RTA somewhere on River Road, it'll go up to Lima Night, and over to the new Amazon Center. They're putting in a little bus terminal switch over there, so, so the students, they can do that, and it'll save them parking, and save them gas, save them traffic, and everything. Also, the Disney bus that they started back in March, that runs to Disneyland and back, they've had such a, it's been such a success, that they're now on weekends going to run the last bus out of there about 10:15 at night, so the people that go to Disneyland can stay and watch the fireworks and whatever. It's a good deal, it's not that much to ride the bus down there and back, and you don't have to pay for parking and everything. And also, the ridership on that Disney bus, when it started out, was $2,400 a week, now it's up to $3,150 a week. And they're just gonna start the program here when school's out, I believe it is, that they've had real good success with, that during the summer, the kids can ride the bus anywhere they want to for 25 cents. And they had to add buses last year for so many kids going to the beach, and there is down there, it'll take them down there and back for 25 cents each way, and I think the adults can ride the same bus for $3 each way. So, it's, it's been a huge, huge success. Moving over to RCTC, they've been working on the traffic problem. They've done everything except stop building homes everywhere and cause them more traffic, but they've come up with an idea that over here on the Northbound 15, when you're coming into Corona, coming into the 91 freeway, they're now gonna extend that lane one mile further south, where people can get into the lane quicker to get on the 91. They're also working on some lane changes, additions, that probably won't happen until this fall. One of the main things that they're gonna do on that is, when you get on the freeway westbound at Green River, they're gonna extend that one lane a mile to the 241, where it'll only be the traffic getting on the 241. They think that'll speed things up. But traffic's really horrible over there, and it's caused a lot of har- horrible traffic in Corona. Vector, they're already started fighting mosquitoes, which will probably be bad this year with what little rain we've had and everything, and all three of those commissions have been working on their budgets. I think we got one more meeting with budgets here, I don't know. And then, went to a lot of other meetings this last week, and one of them was Monday night, went to the League of City out in Palm Springs. Thank you.
Robin?
Nothing to report.
Todd, you short-change your kids all the time. Robin, Robin failed to report that this last Friday, the FFA had their annual banquet. And one good thing about being on council, and even being involved, is going to all these youth presentations, and parent or FFA kids certainly do a good job, and we're truly honored to have us as your guests up there for them, 'cause that's our future. Also, attended the junior ROTC dinner with Councilman Bash, and then another bunch of good kids, these are high school kids that are gonna be our leaders, they're going in, a lot of them are going in the military, and just represent what's good about Norco. So, for you parents out there, you do a good job, so just remember that. Another good thing about our youth was the San Ana River Planning. Brian, you planted over 500 trees for down there, and there were red, no, I know how many you planted, you planted a lot. And again, Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts, church groups showed up, the youth out there, along with some equestrian groups, planted trees, so that's a good thing. Another good thing, and I see Joe and Joe sitting up here, and some of our other volunteers, attended the annual volunteer dinner for this city, and, correct me if I'm wrong, over $300,000 worth of free service to this city, based upon the volunteers here at the various locations in the city, from citizens on patrol, to the seniors' center, to city events and staff, parade lights, and all over. Thank you, we really need that. Attended all five LMD meetings, and I have to say, Brian, at least this year, we showed an increase in attendance. One group, one, one actually had three times the number of people that ever showed up. And you did good, Jeff, you recruited your people, not just you, you brought two more people. But the LMDs, they're going to their spring meeting, and actually, there was a good attendance. We had some that never showed up before that actually showed up, and they helped the input, and there was a good feedback, back and forth between them. And I know Jody's back there, she's going, she's feeding back, and that's right, they listened. So, don't feel bad in LMD 4. Also attended the League of Cities. Fellow residents, you have to pay attention to what's going on in Sacramento. It's scary what they're doing up there. Those people are just taking it upon themselves to nanny-state us to death. So, please, keep an eye on it. Talk to your representatives. Look, you got your voting, you got your ballot measures, you got it, they came in the mail. Start paying attention to who you, who's going in that office. And then finally, as a member of the Veterans Committee, I have, and I know Jeff's gonna reiterate on this, Memorial Day, May 28th, you have got to be at our Veterans Memorial. We are gonna unveil our new, new POW, we're gonna dedicate it, our new POW MIA Monument, helpfully funded by the Rotary Club, and it is going to be outstanding. It's a, it's a great addition to the memory of those POWs and MIA's that have served our nation. Following that, the Rotary Club will be helping to pay for it by having what they call Pitchfork State Fund due, so stay around and help celebrate the first barbecue of the summer by being up at the park in the pole barns, and we're gonna have all kinds of fun entertainment. Now, I want you to put your calendars out, or your cellphones, or however you do it. June 14th, Flag Day, we're gonna have the first choir recital in that Veterans Memorial. And we're gonna, it's gonna be cool, we're gonna see how it comes out to be the amphitheater. So, we're gonna have a choir sing up there, Church Choir, singing patriotic songs, free attendance. All you gotta do is bring canned good or dry goods, something for the Blue Star Mothers' pantry to help serve veterans, so just remember that. And then, I'm gonna highlight a sneak preview, put on your calendar, in August, Navy Band is coming to Norco. All right? So, put that on there, 'cause that's gonna happen. And with that, move down to the city consent calendar. Any items to be pulled?
H and I.
All right. Kevin? Robin? Bruin? I'm gonna pull C, as well as I, but do I hear a motion to approve the rest?
I'm moved.
Got a first and a second?
Mayor had to do verbal roll-call vote for this. Council members, Newton, Bash, Hannah, Mayor Protem Gronmeyer, Mayor Hoffman, that motion carries.
I pulled number C, I'm gonna start off with that, is, and this goes, Steve, on the Planning Commission, and this is probably something that I've seen a trend, and I'm just curious about it. I probably already know the answer, but we've had some zoning issues in there under channel, I mean, under Chapter 18, that deal with it. And under our charter, most of the zoning and building codes require a supermajority, a four-fifths vote. And I know, I don't think the Planning Commission requires that, is that correct?
Correct.
That's correct. But what bothers me is, and this is gonna come back to, I guess I'm gonna get on soapboxes, you only had three members there at that last meeting. You got five members, and we have three, and we're voting on some serious issues under our zoning chapter. So, I'm gonna leave it to our fellow council members, when we come around for applications for Planning Commission, that we make sure we get people that will show up. And I know that I can't blame everybody, but I mean, it's not the first time, so, that's right, but you answer my question then. With that, I'll move to approve it.
Please vote. I apologize, more technical difficulties, do a verbal roll-call vote. Council members, Newton?
Yes.
Bash?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gronmeyer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And H.
Thank you. Obviously, my question's for you, Chad. Previously, we had our budget meeting, so I'm kinda throwing this out there as maybe another way to look at things, that on these inspection services costs from Will Dan and Michael Baker, on the Hamner Avenue waterline, if this project was gonna be done during the day, we would use the resources of our own Public Works Inspector. Right. Okay. And knowing that this project will be done at night, that, so we don't impact businesses and traffic, I understand that. What concerns me is that if this was a daytime project, we would use our own in-house personnel, and it would be as, he would be doing this along with multiple inspections on other projects. On this costing, this is for a three-month project or 100 days, it's $88,000, and it's for a full-time inspector, which, equating those numbers out, that's $350,000 a year for a Public Works Inspector to contract this. What I'd like to recommend is that we start looking at part-time retired, either Public Works Inspectors, Building Inspectors, and start developing that list. If you look at what Will Dan used for their resume, for their inspector that they were providing, he's not a Will Dan employee, per se, he is a retired Public Works Inspector that they contract out. I think this would be a better cost savings for us, as a city. We wouldn't have to pay benefits, we just, I guess, cover them under, you know, workman's comp, but, you know, I think there's a lot of us, for three months' work, that would take $88,000 and sit in our truck and write some reports. So, I don't know if there's enough time, but I'd like to see us pursue that, that we can go out, look for part-time retired inspectors, instead of having to pay these kind of dollars to outside consultants. Is that viable, do you feel?
I think it's a unique perspective, I think it's something I have to talk with the city manager, also, you know, the city attorney, and also HR, as far as what the implications of that are, and how that would be done, whether we could develop a pool of folks that could get somehow approved, can provide the right insurances and protections for the city. Obviously, these, even though it is a former employer of another inspector, and they're working for Will Dan, again, we get all the protections and legalese from Will Dan, because they're certifying, this gentleman is qualified, experienced, and when they do verify something was inspected and it was put right, and it's not, it falls back on Will Dan and their performance. I would just wanna make sure, if that's something we approach, anticipating future projects like this, where we might do things at night, or it's beyond our qualification of our current inspector, that we've done our due diligence to make sure that we've covered ourselves.
Okay, then, and I'll just follow up real quick. If we were gonna do this project during the day, we would not be allocating our in-house inspector eight hours a day to this project. Why do we need to allocate eight hours a night to this contract inspector?
The bid was set up to be conservative, you know, assuming eight hours a day for the contractor. The reality is, is for, what they're gonna bill us is gonna be far less than that, in that it's gonna be coordinated, recognized. The inspector only needs there, needs to be there to inspect either when the main line before it's buried, services before they're buried, and that can be coordinated, recognized, you know, on this day, they're simply saw-cutting all night long, they're, they're doing excavation, but they're plating, et cetera. So, our intent is to make sure that the inspector's only out there when he's needed. He's not there to babysit. He's simply there to be there, which our inspector would do the same, when he's called to come out and inspect something that needs to be prior to being, something being buried.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but it doesn't read that way.
It doesn't read that way, 'cause we wanna make sure we covered ourselves as far as time, but we've already had an intent of, of what we're gonna do is, like, you're only gonna be out there for what you need, and they're not going to be out there for eight hours a day.
Okay, but it doesn't say costs not to exceed.
But that's why we want, and I agree, it doesn't say that, it, it's, as far as, my report is costs won't exceed what they, what they, in my staff report, it won't exceed that. Theirs may not say that, but the reality is, is that knowing these type of projects, knowing how inspectors work, our direction is to them, is that you're only gonna be doing what is necessary out in the field at that time. You're not out there in your trailer for eight hours a day somewhere, and that's what you're doing for those three months. That is my, my intent and direction on this project.
So, I would just like to end it with, I'd like to make that suggestion, that we start looking at different ways to approach this as, as we get closer to our budgets, and obviously, this is a place that could save some serious dollars. Thank you, Mayor.
I think the city manager was gonna add to that.
Yes, if I could add to the issues raised by the Public Works Director, dealing with the independent contractor relationship, I also want to point out that there are certain rules that restrict the city's ability, these are California Public Employees Retirement Rules, restricts our ability to hire retirees of that system back as part-time employees.
But a retired Public Works Inspector does not have to, you know, other cities do it, so that, and to me, it would seem that, you know, I could go out and get a certification to be a Public Works Inspector and not have worked for a city, so there would not be a Cal PERS or a retirement consideration.
Worked for Cal PERS.
Right.
Those certainly can be hired as independent contractors, has been the criteria for independent contractor relationship. But I'm speaking about, again, I don't know the qualifications of those that are listed in the Will Dan contract, but typically, these are employees that have worked with public agencies, that have retired from the system, and there are prohibitions about cities rehiring those employees, unpleasant, among other.
And I understand that, and if, and in this case, his resume is also private sector, and that's kinda where I was looking, that maybe we need to bring some private sector thinking into the public sector. Thank you.
Anybody else to hear approval? Greg? Do you have a motion to approve? I move to approve. Second?
Councilmember Hannah?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gronmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes.
That motion carries 3-2.
Greg, you pulled I.
Yes, thank you. Chad? Once again, on this line of thinking, we, this is for engineering design services for 6th Street and 2nd Street widening projects. We have hired, back in 2016, we hired RK Consulting Group and Albert Grover to provide engineering design services and traffic design services, under the assumption, these are- staff is anticipating additional work will be required to modify existing plans not yet submitted for Second Street and Sixth Street widening projects. And the way I'm looking at that is, these two companies have already come up with additional costs for additional studies that are being anticipated by staff for drawings that have not been completed nor submitted. That's the way this reads. How do you do that? I mean, that's crystal balls costs.
It's actually, I requested it mainly because, and we have actually three projects we're trying to work with Caltrans on, and the first one's been torturous to get through, and that's the mound project on the side of the, on Second Street and 15. That's gone through five submittals. Again, we only planned for three. It's just every time they get it, they find something else they didn't realize. They want another verification. And with that, we've tried to learn the lessons from that to anticipate what the next submittals are. But in preparation of the two submittals that we want to submit and get into Caltrans for Sixth Street and Second Street, we've already exceeded our money at this point, or we've reached our cap. And I already know and believe, because of my previous experience, that it's going to be another long, protracted process, and every time there's a revision, or every time we know they're going to say, you know, we really want this study now, we didn't think we needed initially, we understood your project, because we had meetings with them describing our projects, they were generally on board and agreed with our concepts and why we needed them. Now I'm having to defend them, and because they're insisting, I don't need two right-turn lanes to go on the freeway, I don't have enough traffic on Second Street. And we're sitting or shaking our heads, well, now they want traffic studies, now they want, and again, I'm not a traffic person, they want other reports that they've named. So I've already anticipating that, gotten quotes from either Albert Grover, who does the traffic side, or on the engineering side with Dominic as far as other changes they want. It's really, I'm asking for, I've asked them to give me a ballpark number, to get this through the finish line, and thinking in their experience, what do you think they're going to throw us at this point, based on what we dealt with? Give me that number. Doesn't mean we're going to spend it, I just want to be ready and keep this going, I have to keep coming back for a little more, a little more, because now they've asked for this, they've asked for that. And so really, they're not trying to push something, or I've asked, help me get this to the finish line, because frankly, until I submit, they're not going to give me any more opinions. And that's when I find out, now you want all this information, that you didn't tell me you wanted before. And it's extremely frustrating. I have contacts in Caltrans that are the higher-ups, and I've tried to get some relief from some of these, we've had a couple of meetings on projects, that's how we've frankly gotten to this point on the mound project, otherwise it would be even longer. They wanted all kinds of extra work on that, we've eliminated.
I mean, I get that with, and I understand the frustration with Caltrans and those agencies.
Right.
I just got a feeling you, or us, we're being dumped on, you know, by Caltrans, but Grover and RKA ought to be going to the mat for us. I mean, they don't care how many times we have to submit, they don't have to fight for us, because they're just getting more money.
And I'm sure they have.
And they're the experts in anticipation and how to deal with Caltrans.
And they have been at each of these meetings we've had in person at Caltrans office, fighting for Norco, arguing that what they're asking for is unreasonable for the type improvement we're trying to do. And because again, Caltrans always tries to go to, their default is, it's new construction, we want everything to our new standard. We've fought tooth and nail on the mound project to eliminate things they wanted to be new, and we've said no. So I want to assure you, they are working hard for us, I have them in those meetings advocating, because they are the experts versus me in those issues.
We're not going to go to the well again on this.
I, if I do, I'm extremely embarrassed on my part. Like I said, this is trying to ask your indulgence to say, help me get this across the finish line so I don't have to come back. I apologize.
Has Caltrans ever built a road before? Do they have any experience in road construction?
They do, and they do it their way.
Yeah. Thank you, Chad.
Yes, sir.
You know, Chad, I was going to pull this, and I know your frustration with Caltrans. I recall sitting here or out there in the audience, when they're talking about, oh, we'll get that done, it was a good deal, Caltrans was going to do it with the mound, the dirt, and Second Street. What a joke. I'm going to come at this at a different angle, because we have our assembly person sitting, representative sitting there. Partially SP1 money for this?
One of them, for sure, yes.
I tell you, take a different route. This was supposed to be fast-tracked, shovel-ready, ready to go. It's time you start going to our assembly persons, and Justin, you're sitting right back there, and start putting pressure on them. They wanted this tax money for this road tax and this thing, and now we've got to put the pressure on them and quit screwing around with this. Because it's just delaying us and causing us more. It's eating up the taxpayer money for this. So approach it that way, because this is getting stupid. This project's been going on three years, Kevin, or more?
Four years, almost five.
Four years, yeah.
Five years.
So we're still sitting there waiting, and now we're dealing with Caltrans. So it's time we start throwing stuff back at them. That's the avenue I would take.
If I can add to that, when we were at SCAG, we had the Caltrans person there, and this isn't the first time we've experienced this, and she said, she was asked, is there some way you can make things faster and easier for cities? And she said, we do, and I think half the room laughed. And it's just, the truth of the matter is, is they waste tons and tons and tons of money. And so I was going to pull this too, because I just, truthfully, I don't even know what to say to it. I mean, I also understand your dilemma. I know that we'd love to push the private sector into this, but the reality is, is you're dealing with that entity that's totally out of control. And that's the fact, they're out of control. There's nobody watching them. And this is for the representative of Assemblywoman Cervantes, sitting over there. If they could help us and step in, it would be really, really nice, because essentially, and I, I agree and don't agree with my colleague over here, but the problem is, we're actually being asked to put money forth for something where there's not even a plan, because we're throwing ourselves at the mercy of a crazy organization. That's the reality. Caltrans.
And I'd just like to say, I mean--
It's not your fault.
I know it's frustrating, and I'm asking you just to trust me, as the advocate for the city, working with our consultants, I will keep a fiscal eye on this, I just need the approval to push this. But I'm the sword on this process, I have to push it, and I'm working with everybody I can in Caltrans, and Andy knows my conversations with him. If you approve this, again, this is to help me get this, what I'm hoping is to the finish line and done, and that's all I can promise you at this point. Otherwise, really, the project's going to have to stop, and I'm going to have to go the longer route, which is going to be even farther off in the future to get this done, and sit there and go through the monotony of Caltrans process and reviews without even submitting anything. So I'm just trying to continue this project, not have it stop cold and start over. That's all I can say, is we are pushing this hard.
We can't afford to hold this up, this is a mess.
Motion to approve.
Councilmembers Hannah? Newton?
Yes.
Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, this is time for public comments. It's time when persons in the audience wishing to address the city council regarding matters not on the agenda may speak. Please complete the speaker card in the back of the room, and present it to the city clerk so you may be recognized. You have three minutes, remember, topics not on the agenda. Kimmy Karts?
Yes, Mayor. Jeff Cahann?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Staff residents. As you mentioned, Mayor Hoffman, the Veterans Executive Committee is planning a very special ceremony on Memorial Day, Monday, May 28th, at 10:00 a.m. I know you can't read it, but I hope you can see this bracelet I have on my wrist. For anybody that's as old as me and a little bit older, you might remember these from 1970 approximately. These are POW MIA bracelets. This is an authentic POW MIA bracelet that I got on eBay. I happened to get a special one. It's dated April 17th, 1967, it's the day after George Ingalls sacrificed himself. Captain James Carlton Jr. went missing. We are putting in a POW MIA memorial to recognize those servicemen that signed a blank check to serve this country, the men and the women that served this country, who went into battle for us and never came home, or were captured and tortured in miserable conditions for years. This monument, as the president of Norco College mentioned, we are a town that recognizes the sacrifices of our veterans. Memorial Day is the day that we honor the fallen. Sadly, we're adding two names to our memorial honor wall. Rodney Simon and Charles Schmidt will be added to the names that are already there, as well as the unveiling of the POW MIA monument. So I urge, I know you'll all be there, I urge the residents to please come out and support Norco, please come out and support our veterans and our veterans memorial. So I'd love to see you all on Monday, May 28th, at 10:00 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Sergeant Eckoff?
Back to you, Sergeant, Mayor. Mayor, council, staff, people behind me, I'd also like to invite everybody to Memorial Day. As always is my fear, we're going to have too many people there, and we can't have too many people, we're not going to have seats for them, so I hope we are taking care of that. Also, as we've also mentioned, stick around after the Memorial Day ceremony. Starting at 11 o'clock will be the steak fund due. That's going to be at the Pole Barns, that's going to be something fantastic, so bring your appetites. I'm sure everybody up here has already got tickets, right? You got tickets right here, you all got your tickets. Go online, you can get them a little bit cheaper, but you can buy them if you don't, it's going to be a fantastic thing. I got a couple of seconds, so I'm going to talk about something that I like to talk about. The bricks. I just want to mention that there has been some misunderstanding about who can have a brick. Bricks are not just for people in Norco. You can be, as a matter of fact, I think that my father-in-law, who joined the Army in Puerto Rico, I believe that we have the farthest-away brick to this point. So if somebody can get a brick from somebody farther away than Puerto Rico, I want to hear about it, that's a challenge to you. Anybody can have a brick. I have a brick, so you don't have to be deceased to have a brick. A brick is a great gift to honor a veteran living or deceased. When you're up at the memorial, on Memorial Day, take a look at the bricks. I think somebody has 14, how many bricks do you have, Pat? He's got 12. I think that there's somebody who has 14 bricks for family members. And I have to be honest, I was kind of leery about this at first, but I got educated by being on the committee. We have a brick for a mule. That mule has a service number. I believe Councilman Bash is going to get a brick for a horse and a dog. And it took some different thinking in my mind to wrap it, but I understand it now. They didn't have any choice, the horses, the dogs, and the mules didn't have any choice in the matter. They couldn't get drafted, they couldn't join, but they served. So the point is, as long as there's a service number attached to that animal, we want to honor that, those animals at the memorial. Pretty good, thank you.
Hurrah, Marine.
Hurrah.
Danielle Asagovia?
Don't get all excited, because I'm here talking.
You need it, Danielle.
Hi, I'm Danielle, council members, you probably know me, Assemblywoman. I'm here because we need to have some definitive factual information. There are too many bits of gossip and innuendo that is going around regarding the property on Corona Avenue, no, south of Corona Avenue, on Valley View and Second. Now, Assemblywoman, you're at the office, I've called your office, and nobody has returned my call. I've spoken to my congressman, I've spoken to the county supervisor's office, I've spoken to the Assemblyman in Whittier, because I have quite a bit of property there. Because we're trying to find out as to whether or not that property on the corner has been designated by the state, that if we do not let the commercial complex go up, that it's going to become high-density, low-income housing. Now, according to everyone that I've spoken with, it's not. And I've been referred to speak to someone in the Assemblywoman's office. My congressman has, their assistant has sent a message to your office, the Riverside Supervisor's Office assistant that I spoke with sent a message to your office, my Assemblyman in the city of Whittier sent a message to your office. So I'm reaching out to you, my council members, to get a definitive answer, so that your constituents in Norco will know what the heck is going on, other than the fact that we do not want a commercial building in the middle of our residential equine area. We are horsetown USA, even though quite a few of us, me included, every now and then say that we are soccer town USA, because Silver Lakes has not turned into what we were told it to be. But this is ridiculous, this is in our backyard, and we don't want it. So I leave it all to you to find a way, to find the answer, so it can be publicly explained to everyone. And perhaps you might use your wonderful influence on our wonderful Assemblywoman to get that definitive answer. Thank you.
Danielle, Justin DeWales is Assemblywoman Cervantes's representative, just so you know, that's who it is.
That's fine, I don't care.
Okay, I just wanted to--
I'm just bringing it here for you guys.
All right.
You are on that ladder, you are the first rung on the ladder that should know the information. And if I can't get it, y'all should be able to get it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, that concludes public comments.
Closing public comments. Five discussion action items, here's 2017. Oh, Justin had a card? In the box. Sorry, Justin.
Justin DeWales.
I believe you.
I just checked it a little bit ago.
Sorry, Justin, go ahead.
That's okay.
You've already been timed down, see?
Making me sweat in my seat tonight, goodness. Justin DeWales from Assemblymember Cervantes's office. I don't know if I'm allowed to address other discussion items while I'm giving public comment, but you know, I'm always here to, if you have an issue with Caltrans or a transportation project that's going awry in some way, you know, I'm always here. I will look into that particular issue with Caltrans and RCTC, be happy to discuss that with you.
There you go, Chad.
And would just like to give you an update about what the Assemblymember is working on. She, one of her bills did pass the Senate Transportation Committee this week unanimously, that's AB 162. Now, this bill would make all carpool lanes in Riverside County continuous access. It was endorsed by our Board of Supervisors, and so, as you all know, our carpool lanes, you can only get on them and off them at certain points. So this bill would change that, hopefully ease traffic flows, and it's also been shown to reduce traffic collisions, make our highways safer. So that bill is moving through the Senate. AB 2123, I have discussed this bill in this forum previously. This bill would provide cities that have been served a notice about potential legal action regarding their at-large voting systems. It would give them an additional 90 days before they have to make a decision on whether or not to move to district-based voting. And that bill, that bill did pass on the Assembly floor. So that will move on to the Senate. The last bill I'd like to discuss is AB 1746. This bill passed the Assembly floor as well as the-- This bill would provide cities that have been served a notice about potential legal action regarding their at-large voting systems. It would give them an additional 90 days before they have to make a decision on whether or not to move to district-based voting. And that bill, that bill did pass on the Assembly floor. So that will move on to the Senate. The last bill I'd like to discuss is AB 1746. This bill passed the Assembly floor as well as the Senate Public Safety Committee earlier this week. This bill will expedite the process of prosecuting serial offenders of sexual battery and statutory rape. So that bill is, is moving through the legislature. And that is my update for tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Justin. Appreciate that. Any more?
No more.
And we're hidden back there, right? All right. With that, I'll close public comments and move on to item 5A, discussion action item, Sheriff's Department, 2017, to hand your report with Lieutenant Brick.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Hoffman, members of city councils, city staff, and members of the public. The Riverside Sheriff's Department has enjoyed a proud collaborative relationship with the city and community since its incorporation in 1964. This will be a short, and I emphasize short, overview of your Sheriff's Department services. The City of Norco contracts with the Riverside Sheriff's to provide all-inclusive law enforcement services to its residents. The Norco Sheriff's Office consists of 22 staff members, including one lieutenant, two sergeants, 12 patrol deputies, two dedicated special enforcement team deputies, two dedicated community service officers, one city community service officer, and one administrative assistant. Their duties include evaluating crime, identifying trends, and developing solutions to minimize or eliminate the negative effects on the community. Because of the contracted services with the Sheriff's Department, our deputies have access to many resources, including the helicopter, SWAT, bomb team, forensic, and crime analyst. With the use of our detective bureau and special enforcement team, we conduct regular sex offender and probation parole compliance checks. Meltheft is a crime that seems to be increasing not only in Norco, but other jurisdictions as well. We have made it a priority to investigate those crimes and identify and arrest the suspects involved. To date, we have identified and arrested a number of suspects for meltheft and related crimes, and have recovered hundreds of stolen pieces of mail belonging to our Norco residents. Our diligence will continue. So for 2017, we had 10,062 calls for service, a 3.5% increase over 2016. Each year, we see an increase as a continuing trend. Part 1 crimes, which are crimes reported to the FBI for statistical purposes, include homicides, forcible rapes, robberies, aggravated assaults, burglaries, larceny theft, motor vehicle theft, and arson. For 2017, all have seen an overall 13% decrease. The decrease is based in part upon the hard work of the men and women affiliated with the Norco Sheriff's Office and good old-fashioned police work. With the coordination of our sergeants and set deputies, we have developed a close working relationship with the community and local businesses. We have educated local businesses on ways they can prevent and reduce crime, and have established a neighborhood watch program that consists of neighborhoods and over 80 residents. And this program is continuing to grow. Our volunteer group, who we are very proud of, Norco Citizens Patrol, have provided 6,166 hours of time to the community last year. For our traffic enforcement, we've been very active. During the fiscal year 1718, the city received a grant from the Office of Traffic Safety to conduct traffic enforcement and education activities. As a result, our deputies conducted 24 OTS and city-funded traffic enforcement operations, which included DUI safety checkpoints, DUI saturation patrols, and distracted driver operations. And we just had one earlier this week. Deputies issued over 1,889 traffic citations and 458 parking citations. Eighty-four persons were arrested for driving under the influence. All of these categories reflect an increase over the previous year. Overall, our injury traffic collisions have increased by 5.9%, but our non-injury collisions have actually decreased, but it's a very, very small percentage. And we did have one fatal collision at the end of 2017. These collisions were most likely a result of additional vehicles on our city streets from nearby freeway and roadway construction. This traffic volume increase is especially noticeable during commuter hours. And with the recently implemented I-15 construction project in progress, we can expect to see these traffic issues magnified. We will continue to analyze our traffic collision statistics every two weeks and deploy our resources toward areas where injury collisions occur and where we receive citizen We continue to foster partnerships with the community and have participated in many outreach programs, including Shop with the Cop, Coffee with the Cop, National Night Out, and through our Unload Program. And basically, in conclusion, I would like to thank the mayor, members of city council, city staff for being so supportive, and members of the public for making public safety a high priority, and for all of the continued support and partnerships. And I would just like to say that I get to talk about this, and a lot of times, people don't necessarily thank the deputies and the staff, the line staff who do the work. I just want to make it very clear that the hard work really has nothing to do with me. I'm a pass-through. It's the men and women who work 365 days a year, who work the holidays, who work the cold nights, who miss birthdays, anniversaries, who do so willingly and do it with a sense of purpose and pride. So I want to make sure that they get the credit for all the hard work that they do. And thank you for the support.
Thank you, Eric. Does any of the council members have, Berwin, go ahead.
Good report, Lieutenant. You forgot to mention, and you should be patting yourself on the back, that two years in a row, that we've had the Deputy of the Year.
Yeah, that's correct.
Something that's good for your department to be proud of. The city's proud of it.
Absolutely. And I know Captain Hedge can attest to this, we are very selective about who comes to Norco. And we are very, very fortunate that we've had our set deputies, who I talked about earlier, with that skill set, that have brought so much to the community in terms of their investigative talents and their community outreach. And we were very fortunate that two of them did get Deputy of the Year. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert?
Eric, would you like to introduce those two culprits in the back?
I'd be happy to.
Thanks.
So we've talked about Deputy Darrell Robertson quite a bit. He is the last winner of the Deputy of the Year award. He is our set team member, he's our most senior set team member. He's helping mentor our newest member now, so credit to him for all he's done. I'm very proud of him, very happy he's with the Norco Sheriff's Office. And then, of course, my boss and commander and previous Norco contract lieutenant, Captain Daniel Hedge, who provides a tremendous amount of support. Thank you.
Kevin?
You know, for a town our size to have a sheriff substation, as you know, and as Berwin knows, and as Andy knows, because he found the pennies that we needed to do it, has not been easy. And when you were talking about you haven't grown in 10 years, well, we were like that, trying to hang on to you. A town our size to have a sheriff substation is impossible. And I just want you to know that your deputies, and you, and the staff, and Dan, and all the people from the Sheriff's Department, I believe you're worth every single penny and every amount of effort. I'm so proud that you represent our city, and thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Eric, for a department that's been here since 1964, with us in the beginning, with the Sheriff's Department, their little office on the old community center and the closet, 7110, yep, it's been a long time. So we, as a council, and I assure the residents, appreciate the amount of dedication that you and your sheriff deputies do for this city. And Captain Dan, do you want to come up here and say anything, right up here, especially about this young man that has taken his duties on? I know, and you know, it's got a bad wing now.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate our appreciation for the council, for their support over the years. I've been working on and off in this community since 1998, when I was a deputy working patrol out here, and I've said that many times. And I am very fortunate to have Eric as my chief of police for the City of Norco, who replaced me, which was a very good choice. And he makes my life a lot easier. And he frequently gives accolades to his staff and rarely to himself. So I would like to take this opportunity to kind of put the focus on Eric. And even with a broken wing, he decides to come to work every day. And even when he was off due to his injury, he was still working via phone, via text, and contacting me just about daily. So I do want to thank you, Eric, and you're doing an outstanding job for not only the city, but for the Sheriff's Department, for me personally. Thank you very much.
All right. Good job. Do I have a motion to receive and file? Got a first and a second?
Councilmembers Hannah, Newton, Bash, Mayor Pretem, Grundmeyer, Mayor Hoffman.
Yes. We're going to take a 10-minute break, Cheryl, for technical difficulties, and as our customary 9:00 p.m. All right? All right, we're going back, continued public hearings. 6A, transition from at-large district to base council member elections. And so, this is going to be Cheryl? City attorney? I'm sorry.
Or Cheryl, either one. We're back again. This is a continued public hearing from the last council meeting. What you have before you is an ordinance, which if you adopted it, would establish district voting for the 2018 election, based upon the map which you approved about a month ago. You have a number of options, and each one of them has some attendant risk. And there are probably options, I'll give you some general ideas, but there are options, perhaps in your discussions you'll think of that I haven't considered. Option one, of course, is to not adopt anything. And I think we all know that what that means is that there will be litigation. Option two is to adopt the map and establish voting districts 2018, which is what's on the agenda. Option three is theoretically, I guess you could continue it for further discussion. Four is adopt an ordinance with an effective date following the 2018 election, in order to give you opportunity to look at outreach programs and potentially other approaches, as well as the results of the 2018 election, which will be the first even-year election that the city's had in quite some time. I guess a fifth option might be to do nothing, but indicate that the city will commence an outreach program and do an analysis of the 2018. And after the 2018 election, go through the mapping process in public hearings again. Those are five options, but I suppose that there might be others. And you can tell that depending upon what, on the scale of doing nothing, which is 90% chance of being sued, I guess nothing's ever 100% in life, to adopting and imposing districts beginning in 2018, which is zero chance of getting sued. The options in the middle have varying chances of ending up in court. If you have any questions, obviously, I'm happy to answer them, but I think we've discussed this enough, so I think all of you have a very good idea of not what you're going to do, but at least what the options are and where you might go.
I also want to comment that Dr. Levitz is here from the National Demographer Corporation here for, to offer assistance. If any of the council members, I'll start down there. Berwin, do you have any questions of staff? Or Dr. Levitz?
No, right now, I'm waiting to hear the, hear from the doctor, and then all the cards and stuff.
For what it's worth, we aren't anticipating that Dr. Levitz will make a formal presentation, just respond to questions. I mean, I think that he's probably said all he can say.
Robin, do you have any questions? Greg?
Yeah, only John, that our report calls for council to request an ordinance establishing by-district elections. Nothing in the staff report about now coming up with different options.
Oh, I'm just, yeah.
So is it either up or down, or is it conditional upon these options that you mentioned?
Depending upon what you chose to do, that the ordinance would have to, again, if you adopt an ordinance that isn't literally the one that you have in front of you, then it'll have to be massaged to reflect that, which is not that difficult. Actually, the only massaging that if you actually adopt something would be the effective date. Other things don't require the adoption of this ordinance, but rather just taking some motion action. Okay. Thank you.
Kevin? Okay, I think we're ready to hear the cards before you say anything. Cheryl, do you have cards on this?
Jody Philkins-Weber.
Oh, I got to open this officially. Public hearing's open. Sorry, Jody.
Thank you. No, I don't. I could actually talk a lot louder than my voice carries. I will reiterate some of the things that you already know about me, and I'm doing that not for my own accolades, but solely for the purposes of the record, which is, I always think, as an attorney, and know what might be looked at for future litigation. So I am Jody Philkins-Weber. I am currently a state commissioner on the first California Citizens Redistricting Commission. So I do have experience in redrawing district boundary lines throughout the entire state of California. I currently serve as chair on the commission, but I do not come before you in that capacity. I come before you as a resident of the City of Norco for the last nine years, coming up next weekend. As a resident, as I've stated to you since November, I do oppose districting in the City of Norco. I've read all of the public comments, I've heard from everyone since I have been at every hearing regarding this. And essentially, you have 100% of your constituency and all of the citizens that are against actually districting. I have never known this particular council to disregard such a significant number of constituents and citizens that have come before you. And that would be in regard to all kinds of things that we've seen, such as the accessory ordinances, or egg ranch, or whatever. You've actually, in the past, no matter where there's been changes on council, have actually paid attention to your constituents, and I'm asking you to do that tonight, and to oppose any districting. But your decision tonight should take into consideration of that. My personal opinion is that you do not have racially polarized voting in the City of Norco, not for the size that we have. You also do not have a situation of intentional discrimination at any level of prohibiting anybody from actually filling out an application to actually run for city council. The fact that no minority group has actually necessarily done that does not mean that it's indicative of discrimination, just because we have an at-large voting system. If you were to consider this district plan, you will be deferring the vote of the majority of the citizens for 2018, which is something you have to consider. And everyone that has come before you also understands the financial impacts of this. I disagree with staff a little bit. I think that he's a little light on the $2.5 million for plaintiff's fees and defense costs on this, but I'm thinking it could be a bit higher. But even with that in mind, I know you went through your budget meetings, and I've looked at some of the materials, but you have a reserve, and I understand it's about $10 million, which is more than double of what you actually need for your current budget. And that's what that reserve is for, in situations such as this. So even if you had to defend a lawsuit, which by the way, is premature for you to consider because you haven't been sued yet, you can pull that money from reserve, and you will still be more than double than what you are required, and if you'll indulge me just for a moment.
Just a moment.
I, as a citizen taxpayer, I am actually asking that the city council pull from reserve to defend any lawsuit. And as I said before, it is premature. There's nothing to suggest that if you turn down districts tonight, that even if you are sued, and Mr. Harper suggests a possibility of 90%, that's not to say that even if you are sued, you can't change your mind or consider any other settlement later on. And you'll be able to cut your losses at that time. But right now, we don't even know that this gentleman is going to do that, because it might be a battle that's not worth it, because the same results of the studies that he has performed will obviously result in a finding that you cannot create a majority-minority district here that will serve the purpose of the California Voting Rights Act. You do not have racially polarized voting, you do not have any evidence of discrimination. And so with that, I encourage you to vote down districts. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody.
Lynda Dixon?
Good evening. I was not going to speak on this again, because I've two attended every single meeting, and I've spoken at every single meeting. I know that public comment was asked for. I have yet to hear any citizens speak on this behalf, and you are our representatives. This is our tax dollars. And yes, I do not want districts. I do want to vote for my own council people. I think this should be deferred. We should not accept that we're going to have districts for the 2018 election. Defer this, and then change, if you must, at a later date. But Jody said it all, and you're hearing this from somebody who is a representative and a chair of districting at the state level. So what you have to take into consideration, we have one of our own that has spelled it all out to you, and you've got to really listen to this. We do have reserves, and I understand that this is sacred funds, and this is for a rainy day, and we're going to have a recession, and we've got to get through another one. But this is our lifestyle. This is our home, and this is our future.
Thank you, Lynda.
Mayor, that's all the cards on this item.
Go ahead. This is a very important issue. I will entertain additional cards, our speakers, if you fill one out this time, because of the importance of this matter.
I've also been to all the hearings, and I decided I'd probably go ahead and speak again, just to make it a, but what Jody said is exactly right. And the thing I wanted to add is SB 54, I know it's a different topic, but the point is there's a movement sweeping across the state where the cities are finally just getting fed up with what's going on in Sacramento, and they're pushing back because SB 54 goes against federal law. The California Voting Rights Act is in conflict with the Federal Voting Rights Act. So I think for the same reasons, we can push back on this and say, look, we're going to be just fine if we don't go to districts, because we're still following federal voting rights rules. And again, like she, like Jody said, we don't, if we don't have a problem, then why are we trying to put a solution to something that's not an issue? So at a minimum, I would request that we defer, get past this election, let's see what happens. And I believe, because there's this whole sweep going against Sacramento, I think we can fight this and we can win this one. But we got to start by fighting it by not adopting the ordinance tonight. So thank you.
Jeff? Thank you, Jeff.
Harvey Sullivan?
I just turned the card in.
Well, see, it happens.
Anyway, thanks for the job you guys do, and I know you've got a hard decision here to make, and I'm not going to put any pressure on you one way or the other. You're up here, you have the keys to the bank, you know, so, and if we can afford the lawsuit, and we can afford to fight it, that's one thing. If what Jody says is correct, and Jody has someone that can back that up and guarantee that, you know, that we're not going to have to pay anything, and we can get out of that, that would be great. If that's true, and I'm not saying it's not true, but we don't know. We don't know the unknown. So you had to make the best decision for the city, all the citizens. I don't like the districting either, but if it's something that's going to cost us $500,000 more dollars, up to $2 million, then I don't think we have that kind of money to fight it. So you guys make the hard decision.
Thank you, Harvey.
Mayor, that's all the cards I have.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Bring it back to the dais. Berwin, let me start down there with you.
Thank you, John. Could you tell me those options again?
Oh, sure.
Because I couldn't hear you a good while ago.
Sure. Again, these are just my thoughts about potential actions you might take, some more risky than others. And you may have other thoughts, and of course, that's your decision. First one is, has been suggested by the speakers, is don't adopt the ordinance for districts. And we know the potential of being sued under those circumstances. Jody could, could be right. I mean, Mr. Schenkman is involved in a great deal of other litigation, along with other larger law firms that he's associated in, but nonetheless, this may not be worth his effort. I know that he feels that Norco should go to districts. I've met with him, and he feels strongly that districts are a solution to what he perceives to be a problem, even if the citizens of Norco disagree. Second is to adopt this map and establish districts for 2018 election. What's on the agenda? Third might be to continue this for further discussion, if you think that there is any additional information that you might need before you make a decision, recognizing that probably would mean that the ordinance would not be effective in time to be on the 2018 election unless, as happened, for example, in Palmdale, a court ordered the, either the election results set aside or a special election. Fourth option is to adopt the ordinance with an effective date following the 2018 election. That gives you an opportunity to look at the results of the 2018 election. For those of you who don't really understand what, why we keep mentioning 2018 as being significant, it's the first time that this city has had a city council election in conjunction with the general election statewide for quite some time. Our elections have always been an odd number of years. That's why 2018 might be significant. And that the next option is to do nothing but indicate that the city will commence an outreach program and do an analysis of the 2018 election results, and potentially go through the process that we've just gone through again. As I said, there may well be other options. One of the options, which was, I'm just not an option, one of the things that we do during that period, or potentially, even if you didn't do anything, is to examine more carefully the position of the registrar of voters on whether or not cumulative voting, for example, might be somewhat less difficult than the registrar would have us believe.
Thank you. On that, number five, John, the outreach, to wait till after the 2018 election, and then study that, is there any way that after the election, we can tell the number of Hispanic voters after that?
Certainly, the 2018 election would give us better data than we have now, simply because the turnout would be, likely would be significantly greater. And there are other races that are occurring at the same time, which might also be subject to analysis.
Okay, but the registrar, I know you fill out your card to vote and everything, but the registrar would have that broken down?
No. It's, I mean, if I say this wrong, you can tell me, but no, it's based upon surname. You just assume that somebody that has a Hispanic surname isn't in fact Hispanic.
So you just had to go through there yourself, and the city would have to go through there and check to see?
Yeah, we do what we did with this, the analysis that we've done to this point. Right.
Do you need Dr. Levitz to clarify that, Berwin?
Yeah, if he would.
Or was I right?
To make sure it's on? Okay. I just want to clarify that we would, you know, there's a standard filter out there. The state actually runs that statewide every two years following each midterm or presidential election. We would use that database. The advantage of 2018, again, is that we don't have, right now, we don't have any city council races where we've, where we have them take place at the same time as a midterm or presidential year. 2018 will be the first time that that happens. And so we'll be able to draw on that statewide database where they've identified the surnames of people who they believe are Latino, thanks to that surname filter. We know it's not perfect, but it's what the courts use.
I suppose potentially that there would be, in an at-large election, or not, a Hispanic candidate. Would you give us some better data as well?
So you're saying it would be two years after this election before we could get a count on?
So the 2018 data will probably be available sometime in early 2019. I don't want to put a precise month on it, because we're relying on the people at the state to calculate it. And that for 2016, took until about July of 2017 to get our final counts, because they kept updating the data. But the point is, you'd have it at least a year and a half out before the next election. We would be able to run it very quickly once we have that data available. We could potentially work even with Riverside County to get at least the precinct-level election results, once they certify the results in December. And then we would be able to come back in early or mid-2019 with an update, or with that information from the 2018 election.
Okay, thank you much. All right, John, on?
Intercept closed, Dr. Levitz. You probably get questioned again.
What's that?
I was just telling them, don't go too far.
Oh, okay. On option four there, John, you're saying that we could, we could adopt them out tonight, and then not do anything about the resolution until after?
Essentially, what you do, adopt the ordinance, but have it effective following the 2018 election, for the same reasons that if you didn't do anything. But in terms of Mr. Schenkman, the advantage would, might be that since he would see that you're, at least theoretically, you're going to have districts beginning in the 2020 election, that it might not be worth his time and effort to litigate something that, to make you have it sooner. Although, as I said, Palmdale, and was pointed out to us, Palmdale, apparently the court, which was entirely a different situation, but, I mean, Palmdale had significant problems. But that said, that the court ordered the election results set aside and held a special election.
Okay, all right, I get that. So if we adopted that ordinance tonight, and then said we was going to put it, put off the district voting until 2020, is there a chance that the bill that the Assembly Roman has written would be through all the steps before then?
Although, I'm not sure you want me to comment on the Assembly bill, but, because the Assembly bill, all it says is that if Mr. Schenkman agrees to give us 90 more days, we get 90 more days. There is no incentive that I can imagine that he would agree to give you 90 more days and do any work during that time, because he wouldn't get compensated for it. The additional 90 days extends the cap, and I just don't see any incentive to, for Mr. Schenkman or anybody else who'd sue you on this, to extend the cap. I just don't see what's in it for them.
Right, and I see that, because I've seen his track record on going after even these small cities of 6,000 and 9,000 people to sue them, to make them go to districts and everything. But if we did, if we did option four, and put it off, and then is there a chance that later on, before the 2020 election, we could go back and change it back to at-large?
Well, it's certainly possible. I mean, again, depend, I mean, it's hard to look at the crystal ball, but I mean, if the law changed, or if some of the ongoing litigation changed the application of the law, for example, we may know sooner than later. In Santa Monica, the city of Santa Monica has brought a motion for summary judgment on their case with Mr. Schenkman, which will be heard, he tells me, in early July. I don't know when the decision is made, and their basis, to me, was a little suspect, but nonetheless, it's certainly possible that all these go away.
So all it takes is for one to beat him?
Yeah, but again, depends upon the facts and the basis for the decision, but the Santa Monica decision, which of course will be appealed, but the Santa Monica decision, if it were favorable to Santa Monica, would significantly affect the requirement that cities make the change now.
Right.
For what it's worth, they're kind of at the preliminary injunction, no trial, anything like that. So preliminary injunction slash motion for summary judgment, the city of Santa Monica has spent $3 million to date.
Right.
On a lawsuit that was filed about four months ago.
Okay, all right, that's all I have at the moment, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, John.
Robin?
Well, I understand the financial impacts of this, and that's a big concern when we're looking at budget constraints. But it also comes down to me that, is this the hill that you want to die on? And I think for our town, this is a battle that we're going to need to fight, which I like the idea of continuing, you know, with outreach, okay, and looking at future results, but at some point in time, we just can't keep stalling this and saying, well, we'll look at different options. I guess one of my concerns is this, that if the conversation is, well, we can maybe go to districts by resolution, and then we can pull out of districts, you know, later, but if, and if we do have the opportunity for a Hispanic person to run for council, then you don't stand a chance of ever coming back out of districts. So my feeling is this on this ordinance is not to approve it, to go to districts, that we continue with the outreach like we have been doing. We can look at results from 2018. This Assembly bill for, that you brought up, that says it basically gives you another 90 days, is just another example of how dysfunctional government is in Sacramento, that we're going to get a 90-day grace period to, what, for a, for a bill that's unconstitutional? I mean, it's just, nothing personal over there, but you guys got to get your act together, because you're out of control. So I guess bottom line to me is no to districting. Thank you.
Well, ultimately, this will come down to a judge. I'm going to repeat myself, forgive me, colleagues on council, but it's just ironic to me that I grew up in this town, I've been here since 1961, and I never noticed what color anybody was, ever. We hired the first Hispanic city manager in the history of the state of California. We hired the first Hispanic superintendent of schools in the history of the state of California. And this council just spent several thousand dollars backing a historic resource document that was successful before the State Historic Preservation Commission, in which a key component was, we had the very first desegregated wards and a naval hospital in the history of the U.S. Navy, and the people that worked at that hospital, civilians and Navy personnel, desegregated pools and schools and all kinds of things. And here we sit. So do we spend the money, take the risk? One of the things that is around us is a lot of cities, they bowed, and they're embarrassed. And we can't seem to get the League of Cities to do what we want them to do. And again, I feel sorry for Justin, he's trying, but that bill's a piece of crap. It doesn't help anybody. Truth of the matter is, it isn't just the 90 days, it's all the stuff you have to do if the guy agrees to do that. You got to put maps together, you got to be so many months ahead. It was really just something to say, we did something. And it makes me mad, because what we needed was somebody to carry it to Sacramento. And it makes me mad because what we needed was somebody to carry to Sacramento, win or lose, take it down. It's not fair, especially to a city our size. So for me, I've lived here my whole life, I'm sitting here looking at... And by the way, just a question before I continue. Four months, $3 million, what is that? How much money is that a day, Gina? $25,000 a day, something crazy like that? What is it, why does it cost $3 million to do this?
City council stipend? Now, the answer is, the number of lawyers, number, Santa Monica is the one that spent the money. First of all, they hired Gibson Dunn, correcture, to represent them. So my expectation is that the partners that are working for them are billing in the $1,000 an hour range.
So another group that's going to make a lot of money on this thing, I mean, the demographers, no offense, doctor. But it's ridiculous. And what bothers me the most is we're going to deny three-fifths of our city the right to vote for who they want to represent them in the next election. Cumulative voting? I guess where I'm coming from, maybe where Berwin's coming from, is after 2018, we'll have better data. First time we'll draw on a statewide election. We can look at cumulative voting, which I think is crazy. It means you can put three votes on one person. In what America do I live in? And so I guess for me, this is, he said it best, "What hill are we going to die on?" We're a community. And the difference between us and other communities, and no offense, is if I live in, to the south, I can move to another community that looks just like it to the north. If I live in the north, I can move to another community that's just like it to the south. I can't move anyplace else. If I want to live in an area like Norco, yes, given all of its perfections. But the truth of the matter is, when you go to other cities, you find out, "This is a really nice city. We're way ahead of a lot of people." It makes me mad when I keep hearing the criticism. We're not perfect. But other cities are jealous of this city. So I can't support it. I like the fourth one, maybe look at it to prolong this a little longer. But we're looking at what could be the destruction of a community. And I can't, I'm going to be with him, I guess, we're going to die on the same hill if we're going to die. So I would recommend the fourth option. We wait till after. Or, no disrespect to Mr. Schenkman, I'm looking right at you in the camera, go pound sand. I mean, I'm sorry, but what you're doing is really wrong.
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead, Robin, for right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I was trying to gather all my thoughts here. So I have a couple of things. The first thing for me is looking at what Mr. Schenkman really feels is the issue at hand. And that's probably disenfranchise Latino voters. And so we've seen through the work of the demographer that, and these are things that we know, and Jody talked about a lot of them, but we know we can't create a majority-minority district. In the research on the racially polarized voting, the information came back after looking at several elections, statistically insignificant. And so, looking at it through kind of a different lens, a lot of the stuff that we've been talking about is what if? Well, what if we do this? What if Schenkman does that? What if, what if? And I think we need to look more at what can we control and what can we do. In other research I was doing, it said Latino voters respond to outreach, not insults. And it's an article by Lisa Bedol out of University of California, Berkeley. And I want to read you a couple of the quotes. They talk about all the money spent in campaigns, primarily on TV ads and radio ads and things like that. And it says, "Investing that money in field efforts would result in a much greater increase in Latino turnout." It goes on to say that the United States has some of the lowest levels of participation of any advanced industrialized country. Latino turnout is a reflection of the broader disengagement of US, of people's, disengagement in US politics across the board. And then I change a little bit of it going on. It says, "All of our residents," and this is going to be to Norco, "have chosen to live here. They came here because they believe in our lifestyle. They came here because they believe in the community that we've created." And so I don't think that we're looking at people that are different than us, we're all the same, and not looking at surnames and those types of things. But at the end of the article, it goes on to say, "Only a sustained proactive investment in proven research-based outreach strategies will change the status quo." And I don't think that just is about our Latino neighbors. I think that's about all of our neighbors. Many of you are regulars here at this meeting. And you know that the level of engagement in our community, especially on the governmental side, is pretty low. I think, I know, not I think, I know that the community outreach that the city has done, and it's started at the fair last year, I believe, has proven results. And I think that if we take that model and turn it into an outreach campaign to encourage all of our community members to register to vote, to be engaged in our civic responsibilities and to participate, will benefit not only our data for this particular item at hand, but it will benefit our community as a whole. So I would like to propose, I know the mayor still needs to speak, that we really work at making Norco a pilot city or a model for smaller cities to follow on getting folks engaged in the civic process and doing outreach as a community. And look at our results from 2018 and how that meets the regulations for compliance with the California Voting Rights Act. That's all I have.
Thank you, Robin. My turn.
Andy, correct me if I'm wrong, or John. Currently, for facts for the public, fiscal impact of us right now from the National Demographer Corporation, we're on hook for $50,000? Okay, we haven't received a bill, but I'm looking at your staff report.
I think we cap him at $30,000, too.
Okay, I think, well, yeah. And then, for the maximum potential liability, and well, there is not a maximum, but for Mr. Schenkman right away, it's automatic $30,000, is that correct, John?
Assuming that we do something.
We do something, or he's, yeah, one way or the other, he's going to get $30,000.
If we don't form districts, then he obviously hasn't been successful and is not entitled to anything.
Okay, well, I like that even better. It's not like the, he pre-billed us, by the way, for those who didn't know, for 15 for himself and 15 for his demographer, I thought that was interesting. So, that's the financial. Then the exposure rate that we have is whatever we can bear, I guess, is what you look at. So like Robin, I did my homework on a lot of times. CVRA, there's no intent by the CVRA. Most bills or laws, when they have it, they have an intent. That wasn't, it's even written in the CVRA, there is no intent. And the intent, and actually, their goal was this district throughout statewide, unless you can find alternatives. That's in the law. Now, I look at what we've done over since 2016. We changed our voting. Of course, you know, that was through SB 415. We went from odd year to match our voting with the state and federal election. Based on what we did in July of 2016, on the numbers that we did, and all the information, we were only getting around 23, almost 24% voter turnout. And, I mean, and that's, in our little city of 11,000 voters, roughly, only less than 3,000 were turning out each time. Sad. Very sad. But because of that, we had to go to the statewide and federal alignment for voting in the even years. We do a lot better. Out of our 11, little over 11,000 voters. Unfortunately, in 2014, it must have been a boring election because only 41% turned out. But the presidential was a lot better than that because actually, there was about 75% turned out. So, it's not a presidential election in 2018, but it sure is a gubernatorial. And I'll bet you with all the Assembly positions and that, we could easily see an average between 50 and 60% turnout. And that would give Dr. Levitz a whole lot better information to make the decision on rather than just less than 3,000 people voting in our city. So those are things that we have done. So we've actually tried to prove it. So let me go out to my other research. And this is an article that appeared in the LA Times and quite a few other papers. "Voting Law Meant to Increase Minority Representation Has Generated More Lawsuits Than Seats For People of Color" as dated April 9, 2017. Not all laws that are passed are always results in what the lawmakers wanted to do. Good intentions don't always end up with good results. I learned that a long time ago. I learned that in Catholic school, where I attended with a lot of Hispanics, Latinos. Even our, our school even allowed different faiths to come in there. We had Baptists, we had Muslims in our Catholic school. Because we were diverse. And this was done in April of last year. But over 22 cities that have made the move to district election since June, only seven saw a gain in Latino council members, according to an analysis by Grassroots Lab, a consulting firm that specializes in local government politics. So that was an interesting number. "The threat of legal action has forced cities to switch to council districts, but in some cases, the move hasn't resulted in more minority representation because the city is already well-integrated and drawing districts where minorities predominate is difficult." That's us. Think about it. Whenever we have, and we've been sitting up here, whenever we have something that comes up and we have Hispanics come and comment up here, they're commenting most of the time about the fact that we want to maintain their equestrian lifestyle. We had several complain that when we didn't have enough money, we had to find the money for funds for the parade. The vaqueros wanted to parade their horses, that's what they're concerned about. Maintaining their lifestyle. I do special needs children's rodeos. 90% of my participants are Hispanics and Hispanic families. They want to see us and they will have to expose their kids to the modified rodeo we put on in this little town. Not depending on what color, what nationality they are, but that's what they're concerned about. That's what most of them have talked about. I see them all the time up at the park, riding their big Andalucías. They're concerned about maintaining our large lots, the fact that they can get on their horses and ride. I live around quite a few of them. And that's all we talk about, their horses. I hear the music playing in their barns until 10 o'clock, and they're really nice because they shut it off after that. But they, that's what they're concerned about, raising their families. They can, most of their kids are at his day school that live over there. So, one of the things that was interesting to note, and this is from the, and I'm going to mispronounce it. So, this is from the Mexican-American Legal, Defense, and Educational Fund. He argues, he says, here's an error is a fact, argues that sluggish increase minority representative isn't necessarily a failure. The law was just designed to elect minorities to local government. This is from Thomas Tenez. Tenez says, "But it also to increase geographical diversity on councils and to prevent one part of a town, typically the wealthier neighborhoods, from having too much influence." Latino voters get to elect a candidate of their choice. That's not always a Latino. This is according to Maldef Sky. Maybe a non-Latino candidate is the, is the choice of the community for whatsoever, whatever reason. That came from him. A group that has gone out and filed lawsuits against cities for districting. So perhaps the five of us are who they wanted. The Latinos in this family wanted. Because we've been trying to protect the charter. We're trying to protect our animal lifestyle, keeping lifestyle, our large lots. Because if they were opposed to this, or they wanted us to be districting because they wanted to be up here, we wouldn't hear 99.9% of the people in this town tell us they're opposed to districting. And it's a scary thought of going into court against them. Because we just went through a budget, and we went through a five-year or 10-year budget projection. But I'm kind of like Jody, it's, our constituents are telling us what to do. And sometimes, you have to look at that bigger picture. This is a little town. I don't want to disenfranchise three-fifths of our people in this town that, because we have some important ballot measures coming up. Not only here, but statewide, that we need to be dealing with. And we don't want to tell those voters, once every four years, "Hey, guess what? You can vote for a councilperson." I attend the League of Cities meetings with all the other mayors. There are cities out in the desert that are just starting this process. Little La Quinta with 6,000, well, less than 6,000 people. How the heck they going to do to buy their city up? One of the things the League is trying to figure out is how to protect cities 50,000 or below with legislation. Because this law was never intended to pick on little cities. Really, well, that's, it's in there, but it was, it was changed. It started including everybody. And that's the sad part about it. So, I'm for Rob, I'm like Robin. We need to do outreach. We need to go out and approach a lot of the Hispanic equestrian groups. If you all attended the Horse Affair we had, or the Ecoin Affair that was here in the fall, the stands were full. Watching the horses, the Andalucías, the Hispanic riders, the ropers. They love our little town. You go over to Thrifty Horse, Dr. Aurora. That's one woman that can move the Hispanic people and get together with them and help us out and recruit people. Because that's, they have a big following. They want them, they like their horses, but we need to reach out to them. Because that's our lifestyle here. So, with that, unless somebody else has anything to say, I'm all for waiting until after 2018, a lot of election, a lot of outreach, to see where we're going to go.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead. You want to say?
I was going to ask Mayor Pro Tem Grunmeier to repeat her motion. But, Berwin, you?
Yeah, I just want to say one more thing after listening to Jody and them, and you're right and everything. But, most of you know, I'm kind of a daredevil when it comes to doing something that people say you can't do. I wasn't always that way in my life. Because, like, friends my age or older, their parents grew up during the Depression and they didn't have any money. So I grew up, my first 10 or 11 years, with my parents telling me, "You can't do that. That won't work. Why want it? Well, it just won't. Or we don't have the money to go do this." And I was a kid, I had a job all the time, like all kids. Chopping weeds out of the cotton and feeding the neighbors livestock. And one day, I got tired of being told I couldn't do that. Well, I went and found out I could. And it never, I never stopped. I mean, sure, sometimes you run out of money, everybody does that. But I'll remember when I first got elected to council. One of the council people kept telling me, "The city manager's doing a wonderful job. He's got $7 million in reserves." I heard that over and over and over. Then, one night, Andy sat there and told all of us, if we didn't do something about that... contract on the fire department we had then, we were gonna go bankrupt. Well, I got to do in the math, $7 million in reserve and we hit a recession and you got a five-point something million dollar contract or whatever it was on the fire department. They're right, Andy's right, we're not gonna have any money. Well, it happened. We went through a recession. We didn't have any money. No money in there. And then we kind of recovered a little bit and then the next recession hit, we didn't have any money again. And I've been working this thing in my mind ever since we got that letter in October because I know how hard Andy and everybody up here has worked to put this money in the reserves. And I know we're gonna be a little short on our budget this year, but the way I feel is, we've come out of it before. I don't want the city going in the toilet because of some lawsuit or something like that. And I can't let my people down on, on their lifestyle. Because I love this lifestyle. There's not another place in the United States that I know of that's like this town. I don't think you could go make one. Sure, you get in the Midwest, you got animals, but you gotta go trailer out to some park to ride trails or ride down the side of the road or trespass on somebody's open field out there to ride. Here, you can just hop on your horse and go. But I can't let my backers, supporters, everybody in this city down for worrying about, about the deal. And all we can do is just pray that we don't get in the lawsuit and lose all of our money. So, thank you.
All right, Robin, can you have anything else? Greg, you were mentioned, ready to go. Robin, can you repeat your motion?
I don't know that it's official motion form, but I'll do my best. You guys can fix it. I move that we work with Mr. Shankman as a pilot city to conduct outreach measures and evaluate the 2018 election data results for compliance with the California Voting Rights Act.
Is that okay, John?
Yeah.
She said what she meant.
So, in plain terms, I just want us to continue the relationship that we've, I assume, Mr. Harper has started to build with Mr. Shankman and look at us, work with us on doing an outreach program and then looking at the election results from 2018 to show the results of our outreach and if that is an acceptable, what is the word he uses? Acceptable means of engaging or meeting what his end goal is.
Yeah. I understand what you're saying.
Thank you.
So under discussion, just, just a question. So if we adopt a map, we pay Mr. Shankman. If we don't, you're suggesting we don't adopt a map and then we don't pay Mr. Shankman or does he still bill us?
We, we have adopted.
We have adopted a map.
No, I meant, but I mean, boys.
Yeah, he isn't getting paid.
Because she isn't saying to go forward with the map. She just said, work with him and.
No, she's saying, I believe, do not adopt the ordinance tonight, but rather approach this as a model outreach program to attempt to, to increase voter participation, Hispanic voter participation and, and candidacies and look at what happens in 2018. And based upon that, then we decide what the next step is.
Can, can I amend that a little bit, Robin? And I, and what I'm, what I'm thinking about is to go ahead and, and do more research on the cumulative voting procedures. I, I know you did some, but we need to really get that as an alternative.
You know, under discussion, I, I, I totally understand where you're coming from, Ted, but the idea that you could have three candidates and with three candidates, you as somebody who has one vote can take three votes and put them all on one person, I just find that to be.
I'm not asking to put it on there. I'm asking to do more research on it.
Okay. I don't know if I can.
The feasibility of it.
Well, there's no second.
But we're still trying to figure out your motion.
Yes. I'm mayor. We have the combined.
Go ahead, Greg.
Are we making another motion? We have a second.
No, we haven't a second. Go ahead, Greg.
I'm agreeing with Kevin on the cumulative voting. I think it's bizarre. I, I don't see pursuing it at all. It's hard enough to get a person to go to a polling place on a ballot to check one box. To give them three, it, it doesn't work. And it, it hasn't worked and that's why the county resisted and, and also the state. I don't think that's our energy in outreach. So I want to kind of modify a little on Robin's, is that we do not accept this ordinance and then we pursue your verbiage on community outreach.
The outreach?
But I don't want to burden the clerk's office anymore with different voting aspects and.
Yeah. I mean, I think actually even my discussion of cumulative voting, that cumulative voting, first of all, isn't necessarily, if there was a problem, a solution to the problem. I think that's part of the investigation as well as whether or not it can be done.
Okay. You know, all right, all right. I guess if, if Ted feels strongly he wants to investigate it, I'm fine with that, but I would like to.
I think, I think, I'll leave it out of the motion, but I think it's something that we need to continue to explore, just like the outreach options for that in the future. We can leave it out of it, but I really, it may be an alternative.
I mean, I would like to step up. Right now, we have the booth that goes around. I'd like to maybe all over that booth put commission spots are available. I think, you know, let, let everybody in this town know that they have a shot to maybe be on a, a commission. Expand a commission. Create another commission. Do something in which you make people understand that these are steps into understanding council and, and stuff like that. I mean, expand that program, I think.
Actually, you could create a community outreach program, uh, commission.
Wow, we're getting off of her. Okay, so.
No, I, but I think that that's the idea behind the motion.
All right, well.
Well.
So what's the motion again?
Well, did, I, I think Greg wanted to not say something about not adopting and then do this as a secondary motion. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Not adopt the ordinance and then add back in your verbiage of community outreach.
So does that have to be two separate motions or if we just accept mine?
It's yours.
Just make it a.
So you want me to add in the not adopting part?
Yes, please.
I don't think you could do it, negative motion.
Sure you can.
Okay.
Cheryl, you can.
Are you ready, Cheryl? We'll try this again. I move that we reject ordinance number 1034 and work with Mr. Shankman as a pilot city to conduct outreach measures and evaluate the 2018 election data results for compliance with the California Voting Rights Act.
Second.
Have a first and a second. Any more discussion on this? If not, vote.
Mayor Hoffman, oh.
I'm sorry.
A little delayed there, apologize.
No, I was trying to push my finger down, I just.
That motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. We're going to 7A and we're gonna ask for a motion to continue that to June 6th because the applicant is not here. Correct?
6B. Are we on?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm 6B, I'm sorry. Hey, you know, well, 6B is the same thing. 6B is a tentative, yeah, but that was the one that, correct. I still, the applicant, according to planning director, the applicant is not there and he's asked us to continue to June 6th. So I have a motion to move it to June 6th.
So move.
So I'll second that.
That motion carries unanimously.
All right, now moving on to public hearings, 7A. Again, I'll ask for the amendments to the city's general fee and we're gonna ask for a motion to continue this to June 6th. Do we have a motion? So move and I'll second that.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. 7A, zone change. 7B, I'm sorry. Nope, I got them all written down here. Don't be changing me now. This is the 7B. This is the zone change. This would be King, Steve?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This is a, a proposed zone change and general plan amendment to apply the housing development overlay zone on property located at the, on the south side of Second Street, east of River Road. You have before you two options and I'm gonna explain why you have those two options, but I'm gonna give you a background first on, on why we're having to do this. As the city council is aware, the, the, every housing element cycle, there, the Southern California Associate, Association of Governments and Western Riverside Council of Governments get together and they come up with regional housing needs allotments for each city in the jurisdiction. And Norco is one of those cities. And what happened with Norco, because we didn't have previously certified housing elements, all of our RENA numbers from previous housing element cycles kept accumulating, they didn't go away. So when we, when we did get our housing element certified, the good news was that the backlog goes away, but for the current housing element cycle, we have that backlog that we still have to deal with. So it resulted in a total of 818 RENA numbers is what we call them, which equate to the number of housing units that we have to provide zoning for. So with the, with the certified housing element, there was a zone change that recognized five areas in the city where the housing development overlay zone could be applied that would reach these RENA numbers. And for it to work, one of the requirements by the housing element, which is a requirement of state law, is that of the areas identified, at least half of the acreage involved, has to be developed at a minimum of 20 units per acre. So of the five, of the five areas identified, we included a big enough buffer so that if we lost some of the acreage, we would still meet our RENA requirements. And one of the sites that was identified was the 22 acres that was recently approved for the Shea Ranch Norco project at Horace's Carriage and Fifth Street, which was 22 acres. Now, since there was no housing developed on that site, one of the new state laws that was reported to the city council a few weeks ago last year, new law last year, reported to the city council a few weeks ago, was, it's called a no net loss rule. That means if, if you reduce your acreage below what your RENA number requirements are, you have 180 days in which to replace that acreage. Now, because of the buffer, we, we actually ate up a lot of that. We were able to, the impact of losing the 22 acres wasn't that big, but it did put us down below our minimum requirement, RENA numbers of 818 units, took us down to 788 units. And one of the requirements of the, one of the new 15 laws that went into effect last year is that the Department of Housing and Community Development now has more authority to go after cities when it's reported to them that they've fallen below their RENA requirements. So the, with our new RENA capacity units at 788 units, we had to replace 30 units to take us back up to our minimum requirement, 818. And in order to accommodate those 30 units, we needed an additional three acres with the housing development overlay zone so that when half of that acreage was developed at 20 units per acre, it would give us the 30 units that would get us back to 818. So with that, excuse me, there are a number of sites that were looked at in the city as potential candidates. This one was selected because it's close to the size that was needed. We need three acres and the first option and the one that was recommended is, we'll call it option A. And this is a city's property. It was purchased many years ago with redevelopment housing funds for the, redevelopment funds for the purpose of developing housing. The, and then redevelopment went away. So this is a city's property and this was because it was owned by the city and was originally intended to be used for housing. And it was fairly close in size to what was needed to replace the acreage. This was the site that was chosen. However, for the past several years, there have been ongoing negotiations with the adjacent property owner to the south, which you, which are identified by lots number 21 and 23, that, that front onto River Road. There's been negotiations with that property owner to purchase the city's property, to reconfigure an approved commercial site plan that would allow for a bigger anchor, but would require the reconfigured site plan to go all the way to the back, adjacent to homes that on Rocking RM Lane, which on this map isn't identified, but it's, it's the cul-de-sac that basically points down to the top of this exhibit here. So this is option one and option, or option A. And then option B is this one here, which would use a portion of the city's property and then a portion of the property directly south, I guess, south and east. The, that, to apply that, the housing development overlay zone to six acres, that would go up to 3.5 acres on the city's property and up to 2.5 acres on the adjacent property owner's property. And the reason for this is that one of the requirements of the housing development overlay zone is that you have to develop the housing first and then after that, the rest of the property can be developed with other mixed use, mixed uses, whether it be commercial, different types of housing, but at least the, the 20 units per acre portion of the property has to be developed first. So with this configuration, it would, if that transaction ultimately gets approved for the reconfigured site plan, it could go forward and not be inhibited or, or prohibited by the fact that housing hasn't been developed first. The planning commission looked at both options, A and B, and they recommended either of, either of those two options. So whichever option the city council chooses to go with, the planning commission is in support of that. And we did that so that it wouldn't have to go back to planning commission for review after the city council made its determination. I hope that made sense because I'm gonna, so, planning commission has recommended either option A or option B. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation and answer any questions.
Counsel, counsel, any questions of staff? Greg, I'll start down there with you.
Thanks. Steve?
Yeah.
Ready?
Uh huh.
So as, as we learned earlier this evening from Dr. Reese and, and some of the ideas that they have for Norco College coming up, and one of them is veterans' housing. Okay? That, two parts. With the construction of veterans' housing, those units would be able to be applied to our RENA numbers. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. And also depending on the magnitude of those units, it could certainly reduce our no net loss, our RENA numbers drastically.
Correct.
Correct. So, as, as we had talked before, the possibility exists that this overlay could be placed on the college in anticipation of the veteran units to be constructed.
Correct.
Okay. And somewhat, to me, it seems like a similar scenario that, okay, we don't know on the college how many units, okay, other than it's a conversation, all right, and that it would help us out. We look at the commercial property on River and Second, which is, at this point, is owned, all commercial, right? It's the prime commercial property. There is no deal. There is no amount of apartments that have been discussed or agreed to, right? So to me, it's kind of the same. So I guess, why couldn't it leave River and Second, those numbers we need, and drop it on the college?
It could. The one concern I have is, is that, as I indicated earlier, there, there is 180 day limit within which we have to replace that acreage, and that's coming due in a couple of weeks. So if we, if we, no, we, if the city council chose to go that direction, we'd have to start back with the planning commission, and we wouldn't make that 180 day deadline. That's the concern I have with that.
All right. The reality of this is that, are they breathing down our neck?
No, but...
I mean, if we're 90 days late, or 60 days late, is it a thing?
Could be, could be. If someone wanted to challenge the city in that we weren't meeting our RENA requirements and turned us into HCD, it could be, it could make, make the city vulnerable.
But nobody's ever...
They haven't done it yet.
Nobody, we haven't ever seen a proposal for that.
Now, now, going further with, with the idea that you brought up, what Dr. Reese showed us earlier kind of gives us an indication of what they're looking at, and that if, if that's indeed what they end up proposing to develop, that probably is going to satisfy our RENA requirements and our housing development overlay requirements in terms of minimum density.
Right.
But again, you know, we'll be beyond 180 days, and I, I don't know what the, what the ramification of that is, to be honest.
I mean, the one concern with the doctor's report was, you know, that on the college or adjacent property, that adjacent property kind of concerned me a little bit. But, thank you, Steve. Appreciate it.
Kevin?
What's the agency? That if we get in trouble, who would they be?
It's Department of Housing and Community Development.
Yeah. The, the college housing thing is something that Andy and I have been talking about for a couple of years now when, whenever Dr. Reese came. My problem now, and I wish it would have, it was just so new and everything, we don't know what's going on. We've been turned into the Department of Finance, we've been turned into the IRS, we've been turned in, because you have a group of residents in town that make it their mission in life to turn us into everybody. And so at this point, you sort of sit there and go, well, we just better be in compliance. And so I think that we do need to really look at the college and really need to look at that. I think it's something that is actually pretty new. I sit on that committee with him. I'm not even certain. He just raised the question whether or not he can do it or not, and I'm not even certain the chancellor. Remember, the chancellor has to sign off on this, and they have to go through a grueling process to allow that through their board of trustees. He's just one president in a tri-college system. So I just thought I would bring that up. And now that we have the video there, we now have let people know of another agency that they can turn us into. Thank you.
Robin?
I like the idea of the college, if we can do it there. I am on the same page as Kevin, though. We just don't need to open ourselves to one more thing at this point in time. So is there some way we can get this taken care of and then start the process to shift it, to make sure we're just covered? And what, what do you think a timeline looks like on that, if we did that?
Well, we've already got a meeting scheduled, myself and the city manager, with Dr. Reese at the end of the month. And we can, we could begin that discussion with them first and pursue that fairly quickly, taking another proposal to the planning commission for a recommendation to the city council that would place however many acreage we can on the college campus and eliminate it in other places of the city so we don't have this problem in the future. So we could, we could start pursuing that immediately.
Okay, thank you.
Rowan?
Well, I like the idea of talking about putting it on the college over here, but the, at least we know they built something for the veterans, it'll be well-used. And I don't have any problem with that.
Steve, when we first talked about this, when we, because of the 15 laws that were passed up at Sacramento regarding housing, we knew last year, and then you had to turn your report in in April to the state, that this was going, may be a problem. And that's why you met with the mayor, protesting myself, was what are we going to do? It's difficult to put overlay out, and this is an overlay, correct? It's, you're not changing the zoning, you're putting an overlay on it. It's difficult to put an overlay on property you don't own, correct?
No.
Yes or no? Okay, so you can put it on, all right? Because we were, because that was a discussion we had, is that the acreage there that you put out initially on Option B, that is property the city owns. On Option A, I'm sorry.
Option A, the city owns it.
The city owns it. And that's why it was an easy application.
Right.
And so that, and that is also movable, correct?
Yes.
So, and I hate to play this game, but sometimes with Sacramento, you have to. So what we do is, it's a very plausible and legal move to leave it there at this time so we get our 2018 numbers correct, and we look legal. And then we have 180 days, would you say? If we do changes?
Well, if this gets approved, then our RENA numbers are good.
You're good, until next year.
Until we approve a project on another one of the housing development...
And then we have to move it. Okay. But if we could go into, in working with negotiations with the college, like you and the city manager, that, if we had to move the one there, we could move it over to the college property with something agreeable.
Yes.
Correct? So that would get us, and free this overlay up, because it's an overlay, to the other property, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I'm thinking.
I have a question. Aren't our RENA numbers going to be significantly lower next year?
Yeah, I just went to a TAC meeting with the Archog Planning Directors, and, and what, what's happening right now with the new laws that were adopted, they, they gave us the laws, and now they're going into, into the implementation phases. So we're not even sure how the new laws apply or how they're going to be enforced. And there's going to be more coming down the road, probably, in the next year. So, I spoke too much, and I lost the question.
RENA numbers going down?
Oh, yes. So right now, Archog and SCAG are working on new RENA numbers. So we anticipate that, and at this TAC meeting, that's why I brought it up, they warned that our new RENA numbers this year are going to be more drastic than they have been in the past. But for Norco, they should be dramatically lower because our backlog goes away. But we really don't have an idea of what the number will be yet.
So you don't have it now, but this keeps us legal for right now.
Right now.
All right. Any other questions of staff? Go ahead, Kevin.
So, just to be clear, it's possible, could the law change in such a way that we could find ourselves caught with this overlay?
No, I don't think so.
Because there's already, there's a, I mean, what are they going to do with it? But I mean, if you do the one that's up in the corner, it's essentially landlocked anyway, correct?
Correct.
So you're not going to have somebody that's going to step in and try to, we'd have to sell it to them.
Well, one, the one that, one of the difficulties that came out of these new laws is the, that's making it hard to develop housing anywhere, not just in Norco, is the requirement that if you force the city's hand by using these new laws, you also are taking on the burden of having to pay prevailing wage.
Right.
And if you build density projects like what Dr. Reese showed, you automatically have to include elevators, and all of these add up, and it's, it makes it prohibitive to develop housing at the density that the state wants us to develop to and that we need to have to meet RENA numbers. So, so far, no one's been able to do it. And, and Norco's not the only one. All cities in Western Riverside County, at least, have the same dilemma. They have the zoning, but no one's coming forward to develop.
And the minute that the property is purchased and that goes, they're going to build it for something else. So somebody ought to be getting on, buying that property, huh?
Yeah, anything current further? Greg, Kevin?
Yeah, just to clear that up a little bit, though, on your comments, Steve, about the college would have to pay prevailing wage. The college will pay prevailing wage regardless of what they build. Okay? I mean, because that's office of state architecture.
Right.
So that, that's not in the equation. They will pay the, the full union boat on that. Okay?
Rowan, anything before I go to public? Robin, anything else? All right. Can I open the public hearing? That thing is here. Do you have any cards?
Yes, Mayor. Lynda Dixon?
Good evening, Lynda. Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, I understand the numbers 100%. I understand the game. I know this property probably better than anybody sitting up here for the last 22 years. We've gone through, yes, there's going to be housing, no, there's going to be housing. Now that we're going to have low income, now we're going to have commercial. The bottom line is, we're robbing Peter to pay Paul all the time on this housing overlay. There has never been a housing overlay on this property. I don't care what the said intent has been. The city owned that property. I understand, I was there when the property owner did not want to sell it to the city. A lot of this occurred, and meetings occurred in my living room. There are other places in Norco where you can put the overlay. You do not have to own the property. I was one of those instrumental in getting the historic overlay over Wiley Labs, the hotel, the Navy Base, and other places in this town. You don't have to own a property. You can put a historic overlay anywhere that the requirements are fulfilled. This is commercial property. It's a property that, we don't have very much of that left in this town. One of the things that irritates me most is I keep hearing that we only have 180 days. You've had six months, Steve, to bring this out, to get it done right. And once again, we're waiting till the last minute where you have to make hysterical decisions. This is not a good decision for this property. And I strongly recommend that there is other properties. We've got an overlay over by the Egg Ranch. You can extend that. There's other places in this town. You have until July. They're not going to do anything to you because we've been through this over and over and over for over 20 years that I know of, and no state agency has come down on you yet when you've been late. So do it this time, but do it right.
Thank you, Lynda.
Brad Renfrie?
Good evening, Brad.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. So Lynda said a mouthful. We've been down this path before. Some of you have taken the ride with us. I'm going to look at this from a little different perspective, though. As the Chair of EDAC, I'm acutely aware of the financial challenges of the city, today and in the future. One of those primary challenges is lack of land to develop sales tax-producing commercial developments. We're simply running out of space. And the fact is that the highest and best use of this land is exactly that. And personally, I would have to vehemently oppose anything that's done to this property in the way of overlays or zoning that would scare off or prohibit a developer from driving what for the city should be highest and best use. Besides that, there's a group of residents there who are very passionate and aggressive when it comes to defending what happens to that property, as the city well knows over the last 20 years. So that's my two cents.
Thank you.
Kathy Azavito?
Which one, A or B?
Okay.
Good evening, Kathy.
Okay, so hello, I'm Kathy Azavito, and I'm here in the capacity of representing RBE, which is a developer that has been trying for years and years and years to put a commercial project on this property with a Fortune 500 company, along with several restaurants, sit-down and fast food and other businesses that would generate sales tax for the city of Norco. We've been working just this week with a purchase sale agreement to purchase that property for the city, from the city so we can move ahead with a project that's already entitled that would just bring, you know, huge benefit to the city financially, that is a commercial project that will, you know, bring lots of money to the city, it will increase sales tax, it'll do, it'll increase jobs. And so clearly, with that coming forward to you probably as early as this evening it was with you, that project and that PSA, I strongly also recommend not going with A and taking that project and just tossing it after all the years and efforts that went into it. And then if you could move to map B, I would, I, even though I, my, the owner of the company isn't here, but I am here with another member of our team, we have suggested this map because we have actually talked about low in, not low-income housing, senior housing along that piece, and it would go over the property that's owned by RBE and Jacobson. But we would certainly rather have it go there than across the property and completely squelch the commercial project that's wanting to move forward as soon as this week, if we could only get a PSA to be agreed upon. And Mark and I both think that the college, since we've been here all night, think that's the perfect place for an overlay. This is, we, this piece, or maybe people think that we're wanting to put housing there. We will put housing there if that's what the city wants, but that's not our intent. Just mostly, we just really want to move ahead with the entitled project that's right on the map of A. And I can't imagine why we would want to put an overlay over a project that's ready to move, that would be such a financial gain to the city. a financial gain to the city. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Mark Howley.
Good evening.
Good evening, all. My name is Mark Howley. I'm with RBE, representing them here. Been working on this project since they acquired it about 12, 13 years ago through various iterations. And we want to move forward. We're, if we can get the PSA resolved, we could submit drawings to you in probably six to seven weeks now. We have, we'd have to go through some processes for the commercial building to get it approved on the major, but we are ready to go, ready to pull the trigger on the commercial. With the option A, you essentially will kill the project. We have, we have a limited amount of time left. We've been dragging this thing on and on for various reasons. Nobody's fault, just a lot of it's the state, actually, but we need to get it moving. And if we came up with this alternative to help you meet the quotas that you have, ideally, it would be for the college, and there would be nothing on this property. But if you have to, if you have to meet your quotas, option B will work. It doesn't impact us, and we can move forward with our project. That's, that's our goal.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Possible to ask the developer a question? Not a public comment. Or is it?
It's, we're on public comments right now.
Public comments.
It's not normally done.
Nope.
Yeah, there, there is no project being discussed, and that's what we're having.
Okay.
Talking about the zoning overlay.
Yeah, I don't think it's appropriate to ask.
I don't think so either. Says there's no project being discussed. Go ahead, Cheryl.
Mayor, that concludes public comments on this.
Okay, I'm gonna close it then and bring it back to the council table. Let's start over here. Greg, did you hear anything?
Yeah, I have a question for staff. Steve, have there been any entitlements granted by the city on the property at Second and River Road?
Yes, there's an approved site plan over parcels 21 and 23 fronting along River Road. That, and that approval has been extended a number of times due to the difficulties that the city and every city went through when the, when redevelopment agencies were dissolved and what the outcome of the, what the outcome of that was going to be. So, the approved site plan is still a valid site plan, but it's just across those two parcels, 21 and 23.
Okay, and no other entitlements on the other parcels?
No.
At this time? Okay. Thank you, Steve. Just, my comments are that, and I guess under discussion, I like the idea of looking at this going to the college. And as far as the overall on high-density units that, or high-density residential development, and it kind of brought this out when we were talking about districting, that one of the fundamentals of why this city was established and one of our principles in land use is that to resist high-density development. And one of the reasons for that, that it will create political pressure on our animal keeping and, and the lifestyle that we have today. So, not only am I not supporting the overlay, I'm now getting to be more, more of a cynic on any high-density housing and apartments, and especially in that area where that is just prime commercial property. Thank you.
Kevin?
I'm not sure how it will kill the project. That's not what we're being told. But I mean, if, I mean, maybe talk to the college, maybe run this through the entire process again. The problem is, is if we don't hit those arena numbers, but if, you know, people don't think that there's a, it could be a problem with that. I don't have a problem moving it, move it over on the egg ranch, move it anywhere you want to move it. But I mean, my understanding is lawyer to lawyer, the lawyers understand everything, and the lawyers are good with it, all the lawyers. So, I'm confused, correct? In other words, you've talked to people, I mean, with this developer, so I'm not sure why it's gonna kill the project. But if it's gonna kill the project all of a sudden, I guess I'm a little ticked at the moment because I'm getting information that's very conflicting. I can't talk to you. I wish I could. Truth of the matter is, I've been, I've been living with this project for a lot of years, and I'm getting tired of it. So, maybe just, maybe just the direction to go is just go to the college, see what they really have going over there. Remember, you're gonna, you may have to go through a huge process. Is there another piece of land that we can put this on and try to get it done in 60 days?
Well, the, we don't have an option that would get it done within the 180 days.
Well, I know, we're gonna be, we'll be late. If we don't do it here, when, I get that we'll be late, and then we'll take the chance, because I don't know if they've ever come after us before. But do we go ahead and we find, is there another piece of property in the city of Norco that this can happen?
Yes.
But this is gonna be the last time this is gonna be, this is gonna happen. I'm not blaming anybody. I'm not mad at you, but I'm getting so much friggin' information here that I can't even make a decision up here, and I'm mad about it. The truth of the matter is, it should go there, it can go there. If they're really gonna buy the property, come to the table, buy the friggin' property. But if they're not, then, I mean, we've wasted a lot of time on this thing. So, where else can this go that you can think of in the city of Norco and run it through the process as quickly as possible?
Well, we could sit down again with the, with the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and look at options. I mean, there's all, there's a lot of property in the city. I want to clarify, though, that one of the representatives of the property owner said that option A would kill the project, not B.
I don't see how either one of them would kill the project, but I don't want to jeopardize the project. So, I think my recommendation would be if you can find another piece of property in the city of Norco, then let's go ahead and let's run it up the flagpole and do this all over again and hope to God the state doesn't come after us. I'm, I'm okay with that. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Kevin. Berwin?
How much property over there on Mountain across from the egg ranch, did we not put this overlay on the last time? I know we put it on part of it, but there were some we didn't put it on. Right across the street from the egg ranch on Mountain.
The overlay zone on the east side of Mountain Avenue basically is pretty much all of the property on the east side of Mountain Avenue. Egg ranch property and non-egg ranch property. So, it goes basically north of the residence on First Street, on the backside of those residents, all the way up to Second. It's, it's about 22, I think it's 22 acres.
I thought, I thought when we did that before that we had only did part of it. And I remember there was those two or three houses right there that were later destroyed. And I don't know if they're, I don't remember, I was by there the other day, but I don't remember if they've been totally torn down. But I didn't think we put it across them when we did that before.
And when we, the first round, when we came forward with the overlay zone, we only had a portion of the property on the east side of Mountain Avenue. But then it was discovered that that wasn't gonna be enough acreage, so they expanded it all the way, they, we expanded it all the way up to Second Street. So, it's basically everything east of Mountain between First and Second, with the exception of the home set front onto First.
Okay, thank you.
Robin? Steve, according to your staff report, we only need three acres to meet our requirement.
Correct.
So, somewhere, there's three acres in this city, correct, that you can put this thing?
There are options.
Okay. Because it seems like this is more like elephant mating, as far as I'm concerned. All these years to get anything, and nothing gets accomplished for two years, and this is even longer. I'm at a point where we just send this back to you, because we're not gonna resolve anything at all to you. And I'm sorry, because the planning commission, and when, when the Mayor Pro Tem and I looked at this, we were trying to just solve a problem before a report was due to the state. And maybe Kevin's right, maybe they're not gonna jump down our throat. I don't trust them. Sacramento's out of control, and it's too bad Justin left. But it is, and we're gonna rely on some bureaucrats sitting in a little cubicle that has no idea what's going on down here to make that decision based on your numbers. Hopefully, they're doing, they start by the alphabet, and they won't get to the ends until next year. But who knows? But unless somebody was to come up with a different motion, I'm, I'm...
One other question, just...
Go ahead, Kevin.
The, the other question is, so if we are late, is it possible that arena numbers will stay high, or will that just go away, too?
You know, at this point, I, I really don't know what the ramifications of being late are.
Okay.
They might not do anything, or we might open ourselves up to somebody, and it's not gonna be, I'm just guessing at this point, I don't think the state is out looking for cities to penalize. What I'm concerned about is that property owner who wants to do something contrary to what the city wants might use, might see the vulnerability of the city and turn us into HCD.
Yeah, I understand that. And I'm concerned about that, too. What if we wore Caltrans hats? No, and that, by the way, what you just said is exactly what I was trying to say before, because we have some very vulnerable properties. So, that's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so, I'm at a point where we just not adopt this, send it back to the planning department, and if there are motions similar to that, I would, I'll entertain it. Other than I will, I, I move that we reject this zone change and general plan amendment and send it back to planning to find the three acres we need to keep our arena numbers. First and a second?
Please vote. That motion passes unanimously?
Yeah, we're at 7C. And an ordinance number 1036, specific plan amendment, amending the permitted uses of the auto mall. And Steve, that's yours?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Mayor.
And we, we got about 15 minutes before we get mooted out here, so...
This will be very quick.
Okay.
This is an amendment to the auto mall specific plan. It's the result of a similar use finding that the planning commission made in 2016 that allowed Paul Blanco to use the property across the street on the north side of his dealership to store vehicles while they were being prepared for display at his dealership. With that similar use finding, per the Norco municipal code, the, once it's approved, the, the city has to bring back a zone code amendment, or in this case, a specific plan amendment that adds the use as a permitted use in the respective zone. So, this was done, it was brought to the, the planning commission made its recommendation to add it as a permitted use, and that was presented to the city council on September 6th. And it was sent back to the planning commission to incorporate provisions that are already required in other zones in the city for approval of storage lots for vehicles. And so, what the planning commission has recommended, that there be basically two provisions to allow for the storage of vehicles, both a temporary, both on a temporary basis or a permanent basis. The temporary would be governed by a special event permit, and the permanent would be governed by a conditional use permit. And in both of those cases, the conditions of approval could be assigned on a project-by-project basis, including whatever appropriate walls and screening are needed, whatever appropriate ground cover is needed, landscaping, and, and whatever other issues that the planning commission sees is needed for the specific project being reviewed. So, the amendment would be to the auto mall specific plan that would allow temporary storage upon approval of a special event permit, to which conditions could be applied, and then permanent storage on approval of a conditional use permit, to which also conditions could be apply, applied for improvements to the lot. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation.
Counsel, any questions of staff? I'll start with Robin. Berwin? Well, we gotta go through the process first. Kevin? Greg?
You know, I'm not gonna let you off that easy. Real quick, Steve, on page two, where you talk about screening, screening can range from chain link with screened material to block wall, and lot treatment can include landscaping, et cetera, okay? Can that be changed?
Oh, I haven't seen.
So that the view from the right-of-way is either block, CMU, and, and to include landscaping, and take out the chain link fencing? It's like in your middle paragraph.
Yeah, that, are you talking to the staff report or the actual?
Your staff report.
Yeah, because that wording is not in, in the actual amendment. That's just a given as, as an example.
Okay, so, we will have CMU and not chain link?
So, what we would do in, under permitted uses, we would, for the permanent, I'm assuming you're talking about permanent storage, we just add that...
A view from right-of-way.
View from right-of-way is...
Solid wall.
Screened by a CMU wall with landscaping.
Okay. And then on surface coverage, impervious instead of being on dirt?
Okay.
Those were the only comments I had. Was that doable?
Yeah.
Yeah, Steve, and you're further on page three of that. You actually talk about that temporary with screening, so, in the red lettering. So, make sure we get that changed in that, too.
You want a CMU wall for a temporary?
Yeah, we don't, yeah.
Okay, because a special event permit is only 60 days.
Is that what that one covered, the 60 days, it's permitted uses? Okay, that's fine, then leave it the way it is. But I just, those six, those special events keep going and going and going. It just looks ugly.
No, and, and in order for it to legally keep going, they, they have to come in and present a, actually 90 days, they have to prevent, present a solid reason why it has to keep going. Typically, we, we don't allow them to exceed that.
All right. Nobody else has a question of staff? Can open a public hearing?
No cards.
No cards? Close the public hearing, and we're back to the dais. Anybody have any further questions? Any discussion? I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? We have a second on this end. Berwin, you got left out.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Norco approving specific plan 85-1 amendment 10 to amend the Norco auto mall specific plan with any related cross-references and other chapters is needed to add vehicle storage related to the operation of an existing legal dealership as permitted use in all districts of the auto mall specific plan, specific plan 85-1 amendment 10.
Please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Number eight, city council, city manager, staff communications. I'll start with you, Andy, anything?
You're not gonna have anything.
Robin?
I just have one thing. I wanted to let my colleagues and the residents of Norco know I will not be at the next city council meeting. My son has been accepted to the summer seminar at the U.S. Naval Academy, and so I will be back in Maryland to support my son.
Yeah. Berwin?
Yes, sir. Question for Chad. On Viceroy and North, there's a sign there on Viceroy that says no outlet. So I was wondering if we could get one put over on the other end, where California goes straight onto the river, put a sign up where it says no outlet, because there, people miss that sign on California that says Riverside to the right, and especially semi-trucks. And the semi-trucks have been going down to the end and backing all the way back up to North Street. So we put a sign up there, just like on the other end, that says no outlet?
I'll be looking at it, I just want to verify it's not a private road from that portion on. Normally, if it's a private road, we do not sign that, but I'll verify if it's public.
What's a private road?
You were saying from California extending past north towards the river?
Yeah, ain't that, isn't that California that goes all the way down to the end there?
I, I don't know. It may end, and it may be private at that point, but let me just check. So if it's ours, yes, absolutely. I just need to check, because I don't know for sure.
A lot of traffic gets on that little road because that sign down there is not big enough for them to see that Riverside's to the right, but check that out if you would, please.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
To my left, John, do you have anything?
Yep.
Kevin? Greg?
That's a, you're talking about Nick Ferrari's street?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's public. Andy, just a quick question. You meet with the prison quarterly?
Next, next month.
Oh, good. Okay, so I always go through our quarterly diversion reports, you know, and I kind of look at, you know, the different tonnages where we are with diversion, especially with manure, and it kind of gives me an idea where we are with animal keeping and horses. And, you know, we're, we're tracking it 59%, and the state requirement is 50%. And the colleges, they're all meeting their mark. But then we come along to the state of California, CRC. And can you bring up to them that since the state requires a 50% diversion rate, that the prison is only diverting at 24%? So if the state can't follow the state's rules, what are we worried about?
June 12.
Like my copies?
I have mine.
I know you do. Thanks.
Thank you. Anything else?
No.
Cheryl? Good job, by the way. Chad? Nope, thank you. Steve? Nope. Brian? Gina? Scott? Congratulations, stayed all evening.
Well, that's because I missed it. It was similar.
Oh, yeah, but, yeah. Eric?
Yeah, I have some unfortunate news. Today, we learned that retired Sergeant Chris Sanford has passed away.
Really?
He was retired about a year. He did supervise our Norco deputies from time to time. I worked with him, as well as Deputy Robertson, so it was a sad day for us, so just if we could remember his services, I appreciate it.
We'll close the meeting now in honor. Chris and I worked together in Paris. He was, he worked for me. He was, Chris was a great guy. Most gentlest black guy you ever meet. Big, tall. For those who didn't know him, he stood about six foot six, probably weighed 250 pounds, like the song of Big John, but he's a teddy bear out there. Matt, do you have anything over there? Okay. With that, in honor of Chris Sanford, I will close this meeting. Thank you.